All right. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Elk Grove City Council Regular Meeting. Today is Wednesday, February 23rd, 2022. It is 6:00 PM. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting in the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel 14 on Friday, February 25th at 1:00 PM and Tuesday, March 1st at 9:00 AM. It is being closed captioned and it'll be webcast at SACMetroCable.TV. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElkGroveCity.org. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. And as we have been under the state of emergency in the state of California with health regulations, we have been remained in the teleconference environment, though the meeting is being held at 8400 Laguna Palms Way in the council chamber. That area is not open yet to the public. City Council, and the Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the city council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular noticed agenda item as it may be necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the city council for more than three minutes. In the Zoom environment, a speaker timer will be displayed counting down the three-minute time. For callers connecting direct via telephone, they can utilize the raise hand feature, or folks in the Zoom environment can also use the raise hand feature. But for those phone callers, you can do that by pressing *9. The city clerk will run a speaker timer. After the first two minutes for those phone callers have gone by, a single or double bell ding sound will sound off to inform you that one minute remains to summarize your comments. When the total three-minute time concludes, a series of bells will sound. As we've continued in the teleconference environment for our meetings, one of our regulations that we abide by is whenever we have a roll call or whenever we take a vote, this will be done verbally so that we'll have the full audio as we roll through the call. And so as I do the roll call for the meeting, I will start with Councilmember Nguyen.
Here.
Councilmember Spees. I thought I saw Councilmember Spees on earlier, but he may have just popped out of the session or just having a connection issue. I know he is in the environment, but we don't hear the audio callback. And then Councilmember Hume.
There we go. Sorry, I had to split through a couple of windows to get where I needed to be. My apologies.
Fair enough. Part of the fun of the environment when we're online, right?
Good times. Ready to be done.
And then I'll roll forward to Councilmember Hume.
I'm here and I apologize for being late. Traffic was a bear.
You're right on time. So Vice Mayor Suon.
Here.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Here.
And we have a quorum. We have full attendance in order to take on the agenda.
All right. Next up is our Pledge of Allegiance. If you would please address the flag and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we will observe a moment of silence. Thank you. Next item, please.
The next item will take us to our approval of the agenda. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers, unique to any meetings with a public hearing discussion regarding redistricting, those redistricting-related public hearings have a set posted time for when the discussion commences. Item 8.1 is a public hearing with a stated start time of 7:00 PM. And with that, it may advance or fall back in the agenda, but what happens is as we get to that 7 o'clock hour, staff will be touching base for us to wrap up any matters that we may be addressing so that we can then poise ourselves to start the discussion on redistricting at 7 o'clock. And that would be the staff ask as you do the approval of the agenda, just to note that movement of item 8.1.
All right. Very good. May I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
And with the motion and the second, I will start that roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Nguyen.
Aye.
Councilmember Spees.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Suon.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
And we have an approved agenda, just noting that item 8.1 may shift around in order to accommodate that 7:00 PM listed start time.
All right. Very good. Next item, closed session.
There are no closed session items on the regular agenda, so that will advance us to Section 4, our presentations and announcements. And that item is item 4.1, which is a proclamation declaring March 6th through 12th, 2022, as Women in Construction Week. And I do believe we have Maria Pachan online, but I'll be pulling up the share screen on that one.
Great. And if the clerk would please read the proclamation.
And for our proclamation for Women in Construction Week from March 6th to the 12th, 2022, noting the Association of the National Association of Women in Construction, NAWIC. Whereas, the National Association of Women in Construction, NAWIC Sacramento Chapter Number 63, has distinguished itself for 60 years as the voice of women in construction in the Sacramento region as well as Northern California. And whereas, the work done by the Sacramento Chapter of NAWIC has benefited the region through community development and educational programs. And whereas, the Sacramento Chapter of NAWIC has unceasingly promoted the employment and advance of women in the construction industry. And whereas, the construction community represented by Sacramento Chapter of NAWIC has been a driving force in fostering community development through renovation and beautification projects, promotion of skilled trade careers, and a positive vision of the future. And whereas, the Sacramento Chapter of NAWIC has sought to achieve successful results for the Sacramento region and surrounding areas in a cooperative spirit with other organizations. Now, therefore be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby affirms and proclaims the week of March 6th through 12th, 2022, as Women in Construction Week and recognizes the National Association of Women in Construction Sacramento Chapter Number 63 and its many dedicated volunteers for its steadfast work on behalf of and support of women in construction, and encourage our citizens to congratulate the organization on its many accomplishments. Signed this day, this 23rd day of February, 2022, by the full City Council. I think at this point, we offer our representative, if you'd like to say a few words to the community and to the city council, we give the floor over to you.
And thank you, Mayor and the City Council of Elk Grove. I appreciate your recognition. I would like to let you all know that this year during WIC Week, I will be doing a Build California Lunch and Learn, where we'll be showcasing a number of gateways into the construction industry, and that will be used to give to the students at the high school level, at the college level, to promote their professional endeavors into the construction industry. We will be hosting a number of events, including a fire station job site tour. And we are going to be at the State Capitol on Monday. So I will be forwarding to the city council here the full agenda that the Sacramento 63 Chapter will be engaging in every day of WIC Week. It has more than two events, and we encourage all of the women in the construction industry to at least participate in one, if not more, if they can. So WIC Week is not just going to end on that week. I want you to know that all the endeavors that are happening again are going to be to help promote and given to the counselors at various high schools and those that are providing help for those at the college level with my big push this year of having that happen. Okay? Thank you again. I just want you to know, we're going to be posting this also on NAWIC's site for the news. The site, we're going to put it on there, and then it'll also be announced on Monday of WIC Week with thanks to the city council here.
Well, congratulations to you, Maria. And I apologize, my line just dropped here. It happens with Zoom, I guess.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want to quickly say, you know, Maria was for the mayor's benefits and she was had to drop off or had dropped off for that moment briefly. Just great to hear the lineup that you have in store for us and your members. And we're so proud of all that you're accomplishing and getting more women to the construction field.
Quite remarkable. Absolutely. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other comments from council? All right. Thank you so much and congratulations. Well done. All right. We'll move on to our next item, please.
The next item will take us to Section 5, our general public comment. So for members of the participating audience, they may comment on any item not on the agenda that is of interest to the public and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Each person will be allowed three minutes or less if a large number of requests are received on a particular subject. City council cannot take action on non-agendized items raised under public comment until the matter's been specifically included on an agenda as an action item. Members of the public desire a response to a specific question are encouraged to contact any member of the council or the city manager at any time. Those audience members who wish to address a specific agendized item are encouraged to offer their public comments during consideration of that item. This will be the opportunity for our attendees in the Zoom environment to use the raise hand feature in order to speak during Section 5. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, there was one written comment, which was actually a request to have a visual presentation accompany their public comments presented this evening. That request was received just to shy off of our 24-hour requirement, just to kind of note the procedural item. And so if it is the will of the council, I can pull up that presentation item for our speaker. Our speaker is pulling up their hand to speak during the item. Be Mr. Mark Graham, so.
All right. Well, we have the copies of the item and are you asking for us to approve, maybe to allow the presentation even though it's past the deadline?
Correct. It's at the discretion of the city council as it did not conform to the letter of our policy. So if the council wishes me to display that, I can put that up. Otherwise, what I will be pulling up is the speaker timer for the item.
Please pull up the speaker timer because, you know, we have those rules in place. So I would like to honor those. Without objection, we'll proceed with the speaker timer.
Staff will pull over that speaker now.
Mark Graham, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Whoops. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mark Graham, Elk Grove. I appreciate that the council started this meeting on time. Continuing the council's education on the health effects of non-ionizing radiation, abundant scientific research shows that the radiation far below the government's limits is harmful to human health. The council has missed this point, but it's not too late to get it. Next slide, please. I do not see slides, so I can't tell what slide you're on. But 1, 2, 3, the third slide, written and compiled by Martin Paul. This is the author of the study that I sent you a couple of weeks ago.
So Mr. Graham, just before you keep proceeding, if you heard the discussions from the council due to the policy for receiving the presentation 24 hours in advance, that came in just a shy light. So we're not presenting the item, but that is before the council. So if you do wish to refer to any of the slides that you're doing, they have copies that are available to them. But right now, only the speaker timer is displayed on screen.
Thank you.
All right. You can continue, Mr. Graham.
All right. Let's, let's continue. Martin Paul, PhD, went through the scientific research and organized it according to eight key health effects. Each, the mechanism of action is the voltage gate calcium channels. That's on the fourth slide. The fifth slide is not only we know that the health effects occur, but we know how they occur. The sixth slide, the current levels are about 7.2 million times too high to really protect human health. And the seventh slide, the health effects we're talking about are cumulative and in some cases irreversible in nature. Then eighth slide, the Martin Paul's document, which I sent you, a lot of it is still dedicated to exposing the failures by the telecommunications industry and the FCC to really acknowledge the science. And the ninth slide, their statements are not only full of errors, but falsehoods sometimes. The 10th slide is a diagram. I hope that you've got the chance to take a look at it, but it shows how EMFs act via voltage gate calcium channel activation to produce various effects. Now, I am not a scientist. If you, if the council wants a scientist to come and explain this to, I encourage you to hire one and bring her or him in, and you will get a scientific explanation. The 11th slide basically talks about some of the voltage gate calcium channel mechanisms of action. The paper produced, presented a list of studies of each of the eight key health effects. And so I've given you in this slide presentation that I sent you just a few. It's the tip of the iceberg, consisting of the first several studies under each category. So that's 12, 13, 14, 15, under cellular DNA damage. Then the next category of health effects is lowered fertility, lowered sperm count, giving you a couple of the studies there. The next category is neurological and psych- neuropsychiatric effects. I've shown you some of the studies there. And next category is apoptosis and cell death, and then oxidative stress and free radical damage. The next three types of health effects are endocrine effects or hormonal effects, increased intracellular calcium, and the fact that the post-EMFs are much more harmful. The 24th slide, each of these reviews typically cites from five to over 100 primary literature citations, each showing that non-thermal EMF exposures produce the effect under which they are listed. It follows from this that there are not only 11 or more reviews documenting each of these effects, but there is also a massive primary literature documenting these effects as well. The point is that-
Thank you, sir. Your time is up.
All right. Thank you, council.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Sarah Sangha, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Dear Mayor, Council, and staff, my name is Sarah Sangha, and I have lived in Elk Grove for 17 years with my family. There is one key fact that should inform your smart city plan and all of your policymaking. According to scientific research, long-term exposure to non-ionizing radiation, also known as electromagnetic fields or EMF, is harmless, is harmful to humans. In 2011, the Parliamentary Assembly of the Council of Europe recognized this and recommended measures to raise awareness about EMF and lower the public's exposure to it. This was Resolution 1815. It is important for the city council to be aware of and acknowledge the problem and minimize our exposure to EMF. The Council of Europe was created in London on May 5th, 1949, by a treaty between 10 countries, Belgium, France, Luxembourg, the Netherlands, the United Kingdom, Denmark, Ireland, Italy, Norway, and Sweden. Today, there are 47 member nations in the Council of Europe. The Parliamentary Assembly of the Council of Europe, PACE, is the Council of Europe's representative body. In 2011, the Parliamentary Assembly adopted Resolution 1815, which said that non-ionizing frequencies, including high-frequency waves, used in the fields of radar, telecommunications, and mobile telephone appear to have more or less potentially harmful, non-thermal biological effects on plants, insects, and animals, as well as the human body, even when exposed to levels that are low, below the official threshold values. Resolution 1815 recommended that the member states of the Council of Europe all take reasonable measures to reduce exposure to electromagnetic fields, especially to radio frequencies for mobile phones, and particularly the exposure to children and young people who seem to be most at risk from head tumors. Also, consider the scientific basis for the present standards on exposure to electromagnetic fields set by the International Commission on Non-Ionizing Radiation Protection, which have serious limitations and apply ALARA principles as low as reasonably achievable, covering both thermal effects and a-thermal or biological effects of electromagnetic emissions or radiation. Also put in place information and awareness-raising campaigns on the risks of potentially harmful long-term biological effects on the environment and on human health, especially targeting children, teenagers, young people of reproductive age. To recap, as recognized by the Council of Europe in Resolution 1815 in 2011, long-term exposure to non-ionizing radiation is harmful to humans. Please acknowledge that non-ionizing radiation is harmful to people and build that into your city policies. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
To our attendee audience, this would be the opportunity for general public comment to use that raise hand feature. At this time, I do not see the raised hand feature. And I will be pulling down that speaker timer. That'll conclude public comment under Section 5.
All right. Great. We will move on to our next item then.
The next item will be Section 6, General Administration Information.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Members of the city council, good to be with you. Jason Bearman, city manager. Several items to report on this evening. First is about our potential zoo project. We're happy to report that the zoo feasibility study is nearing completion, and there's a community presentation coming up. So as the council community is aware, the city and the Sacramento Zoological Society, or I've been working on a feasibility study, which is now nearing completion. And that study outlines the possible program elements, market conditions, and financial requirements for possible new zoo in Elk Grove. Coming up on March 10th, the team will present the draft study during a virtual public meeting at 6:00 on Zoom. The public can register to attend the meeting at ElkGroveCity.org/zoo. Materials will be posted to the website following the meeting. Staff is also preparing to present this item to the city council during the March 23rd city council meeting. I'm also pleased to report that the litigation concerning the Aquatic Center has been settled. Contractors were compensated for their work, and all the principal parties to the litigation, including the city, the contractors, and the architects, made meaningful concessions to bring about the settlement. City thanks the parties and the assigned case mediator in coming to this resolution. As you may have heard on the news, Sacramento Subs Board is partnering with cities and community volunteers to conduct a point-in-time count, including the city of Elk Grove's unsheltered population. And the count in Elk Grove will occur tomorrow night, February 24th. Similar accounts are being conducted throughout the region this week. And next, to get an accurate count of the number of people experiencing unsheltered homelessness in Sacramento County. Visit Sacramento Subs' forum website for details. New traffic signals with the flashing yellow left turn arrow began operating today in the north and southbound approaches of Wyemark Drive and Oak Grove Boulevard. The flashing yellow arrows are designed to improve efficiency and offer motorists more time to make a left turn after yielding the oncoming traffic and pedestrians. Learn more about navigating flashing yellow arrow traffic signals on the city's website. Several redistricting events will take place virtually and in person through March 3rd. Please visit the city's website for a complete schedule and details and get involved in the city's redistricting efforts. I'm also pleased to report that on December 8th, 2021, the city council, as you know, adopted revisions to the city's housing element requested by the state. Staff was notified last week those revisions were accepted, and the housing element has now been certified. And this completes the required eight-year update. With the element certified, the city remains qualified to apply for several housing and transportation-related grants. The second round application period is now open for the 2021 Elk Grove COVID-19 Business Recovery Grant Program. Eligible business types include home-based businesses, small businesses, and certain target businesses. Grant amounts will range from $500 to $15,000 depending on business type. Applications will be accepted now through just Tuesday, March 15th. Visit the city's website for details. Couple of different art projects I want to bring to the council and the community's attention. The Bridge mural on Laguna Springs near Starley has recently been completed. This piece was commissioned by the Arts Commission, created by Elk Grove artist Tony Burns. The mural features florifon and animals you might see along the Animal Creek Trail. Stop by and take a look at this new artwork on Laguna Springs Drive on your next trip to City Hall. Also, the Public Affairs Team has designed the Elk Kaleidoscope mural, which was recently installed along the Avenue of the Arts at District 56. The mural features a quote by American poet laureate Maya Angelou, "In diversity there is beauty and there is strength," on a color, a background of color and shape of an elk and the District 56 logo. The design adds color to the space and supports the city's focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion. Visit the new mural at District 56 Campus. And finally, the Sacramento Regional Transit District, SACRT, is seeking feedback about the rider experience and public willingness to take public transit. The 2022 rider survey is available through February 25th in English and Spanish at SACRT.com/survey. That concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions the council might have.
All right. Thank you. Excellent report. Any questions from colleagues? Seeing no raised hands.
I do have one, Mayor. I apologize. I couldn't get myself unmuted in time. Jason, just a quick question. The mural at District 56 looks beautiful. But I recall the other one that you mentioned along the trail coming for council after the Art Commission recommendation. Did the mural at District 56 go through that same process? Because I don't recall weighing in on it until, in fact, I don't recall seeing it until I saw your email showing that it had been done.
It didn't. It actually didn't go through the Art Commission at all. It was something that was staff-initiated, and it's actually, it's a, it's a wrap. It was something that was designed in-house with the help of a local individual as well that was kind of specializes in that kind of work, and we put it up. So go out and take a look at it. I don't know if the council has any other questions about it, but we're really proud of how it came out.
Well, I'm just glad to know I'm not losing my mind, but yeah, it adds a definite pop to the space. So thank you.
For sure.
That's a color.
I see Chief Albright's hand raised.
That was my mistake, Mayor. Apology.
All right. No worries. All right. Well, thank you, and I'm definitely looking forward to hearing more about the feasibility study here shortly. So thank you for that. We will go on to our next item.
The next item is Section 7, our consent calendar items. And for our attendees in the Zoom environment, now would be the opportunity to provide public comment on any of the consent calendar items. So you use the raise hand feature. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, there were no prior written comments that were submitted in relation to the consent calendar items. As I take my attention back over to our listing of attendees in the Zoom environment, I am not seeing the raised hand function being utilized. That will conclude public comment on Section 7, the consent calendar items.
All right. I'll close the public comment opportunity and look for a motion.
Move consent soon.
I can't win.
And with the motion and the second, I will commence with the roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Nguyen.
Aye.
Councilmember Spees.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Suon.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
We can send calendar items. We'll pass 5-0.
All right. Our next item, please.
We find ourselves in an interesting situation. I did not expect to take a step back with our public hearing. We actually are scheduled to start at 7:00 with our public hearing for redistricting. I would put it towards the council that we can commence with our items under Section 9, the regular agenda action items and recommendations. I would put out there to staff as well, part of it is we have about a half-hour envelope before we kick off into the 7 o'clock hour. I know that we have 9.1 kicks off our mid-year budget discussion, but I just want to touch base with Chief Albright if there were any questions about having some folks here in order to help present with items that come later on in the agenda. But I would open that opportunity for staff. For anyone that thinks they can crack that half-hour presentation, you have 33 minutes right now.
Jason, if you were asking as far as the item for PD, I believe it's 9:3, we can accomplish that in the 30-minute window.
All right. Any objections to going to 9:3? All right. Hearing none. Chief-
I was saying none, sorry.
Okay. Hearing none on Chief Albright?
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Tim Albright, your police chief. Thanks so much for our time this evening. Here tonight to present the findings from our Elk Grove Police Department Staffing and Efficiency Study. As you likely know, you authorized the study, and it has been about a year that we have been working with our consultant, Citygate Associates. And certainly excited for tonight to deliver that back to you. And I first want to just thank Citygate Associates for their deep dive into our data, into really understanding our city and the culture of our organization for their professionalism and what you'll see in a really great report, 149 pages of a great report. I see he has his video on. I'm just going to take a couple of minutes here really to thank who you see here, and that's retired Chief of Police Rich Ward, Rich's. He won't talk about himself, so I will. He's retired from the Oakland Police Department. He's their Chief of Police and also the Vacaville Chief of Police role. So certainly an expert in the field. We were happy to have him as our primary point of contact with Citygate Associates, and he serves as a police services specialist with them. So certainly a pleasure to work with Rich and his staff over the past year. And then finally, I just, I want to thank internally our analysts within the police department. That is Tamara Lopez, who was really our project manager on this. And I know Rich joins me in really a deep appreciation for Tamara being the conduit of information gathering and distribution, and really the glue that held us together over the past year through the various ups and downs as we experienced. So thank you to those folks. Ahead of the presentation, I just, I want to speak really briefly just to a couple of things. As you will see in the- As you will see in the report, City Gate has recommended or provided forty-nine recommendations, which I really appreciate. Certainly, you know, there was a lot of information to get through. They did that and provided some really, really good recommendations. Ahead of that, or following, receiving the recommendations, I authored a memo to our city manager, Mr. Bearman. That memo is a part of your package this evening. But I provide responses to those forty-nine recommendations. So those are a part of your package this evening, and that will serve as a guide as we move forward. Also toward the end of that one hundred and forty-nine-page report, there are a number of staffing addition recommendations, really to cover about a five-year period from this current fiscal year and looking forward. And I just, I want to stress that that, this report is really a guide for us over the next five years as we continue to grow. And while there's certainly room for an increase in the level of service that we provide and providing those services at an even higher level of, of what we already provide to our community. I want you to know that as we move forward, we've, we've done this certainly in the past, but as we look forward, we will, we'll, we'll evaluate the recommendations that are part of this report. Those FTE recommendation additions, programmatic changes, we'll evaluate those on an annual basis, certainly as we develop our FTE requests for the budget year. Certainly, as you all know, law enforcement is really, the landscape has changed over the last several years, continues to change. So as we evaluate that annual need, we'll look certainly at what changes and continues to change with law enforcement. Certainly, our technology and approach to technology that we would provide for allowing that technology to make our staff more efficient, more effective, maybe even mitigate the number of FTE that we might need to employ. And then finally, probably one of the largest ones is, is we will certainly look at our financial health to ensure that those financial resources are in place as we consider those staff additions. Certainly, there's, there are some fairly robust asks. I think they're well-documented to provide that higher level of service, but certainly before we present those to council at our budget request time, we will run all of those recommendations through the prism of that technology, where law enforcement is, and the finances that, that are available to help us with those FTEs and the initiatives. So I've talked for too long. I do want to turn the time over to Chief Ward, who is here, and, and I will do that now. So Chief, it is all yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief, and good evening, Mayor, the mayor, members of the City Council, of course, Mr. City Manager. It's my pleasure to be here. It was really my pleasure to work with the chief and his staff, as he noted, especially Tamara Lopez. She was exceptional. Helping get us the information she needs, scheduling interviews, everything. I mean, she, she's a great hire. I hope the chief can, well, he's leaving, so congratulations, Chief, on your retirement. And of course, congratulations to the incoming Chief Designee, Chief Bobby Davis. And, and, and again, our deepest condolences for the loss of your officer, Ty Lenahan. I, I, I have some idea unfortunately what that's like as a chief, as an officer. We lost nine officers in my twenty years in Oakland. So again, my deepest condolences. I know what that does to a city and to a police department. So in the services I saw that were held, I saw online were beautiful. So that was well done. I'll, I'll, I guess I'm gonna share my slides, my PowerPoint, my share my screen and launch in. It's only thirteen slides. So we'll have time for questions if you have any. It's, it's kind of a high-level overview of the department. As the chief noted, the report's a long one. I apologize for that. But there's a lot of great information in there, and I, I, I hope you can go through sections of it, or if there's a particular section that interests you, please do that. And I'm available after the chief leaves. If Chief Davis or anyone on the council or the mayor or city staff, if they have a question of us at City Gate, we'll certainly make ourselves available because we take ownership of our work. And we, we really enjoyed this job. It was a great job, I think. I'm gonna share my screen. I hope everyone can can see that.
Not yet.
No.
Not yet. Anybody to share your screen? Are you able to share it?
Let me go back.
Yeah, we don't see.
I'm sorry. Let me go back to Zoom. I'm sorry for that.
That's okay.
If Rich is unable to share for whatever technology challenges might exist, we, we have a backup plan with, with Tamara. So we'll give Rich just a moment here.
Let me see. Now I pressed this button, all panelists, so let's see if that works.
Jason, it's not on our end, is it?
Nothing. We're not currently seeing it. It's a, Chief Ward, do you have, by any chances, it show up and display that you have a share screen at the bottom of your environment? Typically, if you can click that button, just watch out, there is an arrow immediately to the right, but to keep your mouse a little more to the left side of clicking share screen. And that should pop up a window of windows to share, and you would probably want to look for your PowerPoint screen.
Okay, I think I got the desk, desktop.
Sometimes it can get tricky because you'll, you'll share your desktop, but you actually want to get into it.
There you go. Yeah.
See my messy screen?
Yeah, right now we're.
That's better.
Perfect.
All right.
Presentation mode, yeah.
You got it? Good deal.
Looks good.
Please continue.
Yeah, I'll start with the, again, it's thirteen slides, so hopefully we'll discuss the methodology that we used for this study, a staffing and efficiency study, our overall assessment of the department, and then key findings and recommendations. I think the chief mentioned fifty recommendations. I think there's fifty-six findings. I'm not gonna go through every one, but they certainly are in the report for your review and, and analysis. And you can, of course, ask questions later if you don't, if you can't find the question or develop the question tonight. And then hopefully we have time for some questions and discussion. And I know your time is limited, so I'll get to it. We reviewed documents and records relating to the department, staffing, scheduling, budget, management, operation. Everything we could, we have a whole checklist that we use, and then we customize that to the different agencies that we work with. So we did that here. We conducted virtual interviews with sitting department staff via Teams. We did issue surveys, SWAT surveys, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. We issued two hundred and one. I think we had sixty-seven replies. And I tell you, the staff of the department, they were candid. They were very open. Many professional staff poured their hearts out in those surveys. It was great. It was great reads. I read every one, and I used those in my analysis. We reduced dispatch calls for service and officer-initiated activity for a five-year period from two thousand sixteen through two thousand twenty. We did take into account two thousand twenty was a robust year for COVID, so we knew there would be some anomalies in that year relative to police enforcement. We looked at documented work activities. Some units have their own activity that they document. And so when we had that information, we were able to incorporate that into our study and gap analyses. We looked at the volume of calls and committed time primarily in the field, field operations, against the deployment of field resources. So we looked not just at the volume though, but where calls came in, when calls came in, against where the chief and his field staff, where they're deployed. And then, of course, we looked at use, the use of earned leave rates and injury time off, just to get a sense of what's real. You may have an authorized strength of a hundred and forty, but we all know a hundred and forty sworn staff are not always at work. We also looked at the city's recent crime history, population growth. We looked at overtime throughout the department. We looked, we conducted interviews with all members of the sworn command staff as well as some supervisory staff. We interviewed key civilian employees, primarily the managers in the department and some supervisors, and records, property and evidence, budget and finance, communications. We conducted interviews with the city managers, members of the Elk Grove Police Officers Association, members of the Police Managers Association, and the Chiefs Advisory Board. We also did one-site visit just to learn and see and experience the Real-Time Information Center. Fantastic effort. I'll talk about that more later. We reviewed existing minimum staffing levels. We looked and assessed future service delivery options. And we, we, we evaluate the impact of external factors and requirements, especially those that may have come about because of state law. Our overall assessment is, I, I told this to the chief, I really think this agency is a benchmark for others, and I plan to use it in future jobs that we have to say, hey, you need to look at Elk Grove, at what they're doing in terms of community outreach and this being thoughtful and progressive and community-oriented, community-focused. I think they should be commended for that work. They have a media and community engagement unit. I don't know of any other department that really has that focus. Their mobile courses, support team, the Real-Time Information Center is award-winning. Homeless outreach, partnerships with Weave, women experiencing, experiencing a violent environment, Child Protective Services, and all of the outreach via social media, Instagram, Facebook, Nextdoor, Twitter, and I think YouTube. And they have just a committed, talented, professional, engaged workforce to which, for which you should be proud. They're responsible, we found, for many ancillary duties. A lot of your sergeants and lieutenants and others, they teach. There are SWAT team members. There are members of hostage negotiating teams, so they teach use of force. They teach TASER. They teach weaponless defense, defensive tactics, pursuit driving. So it does take them away from their primary jobs. So it is a demand, an additional demand on them that we did find. It's not unique to Elk Grove, but it is real. It exists. And I don't think you can get away from it. The department does have a strong focus, as I noted, on community engagement, and that's seen and appreciated by staff. Our survey, by the way, was, was not attributed to anyone. You can remain anonymous, and people chose to make that clear. They said, we see this community engagement by the department, and we appreciate it. Some sections of the organization we did find could benefit from increased staffing. We'll, we'll detail some of those later in this presentation. There's no formal succession plan, but we know there's a lot of efforts going on. I know the city manager has a leadership series where he meets with executive staff of the department, the chief and assistant chief. They've held internal leadership development meetings for staff. There's structured promotional exams, which are excellent. We're just saying, let's develop a plan that's formal, that people can use, that would survive our turnover in leadership. And then many command staff, as I'm sure the council is aware or within, are approaching the retirement windows. The chief is a prime example of that. The department does lack a formal succession plan, is one of our key findings, as I noted. The lieutenant's role, we found, in professional standards has grown beyond the capacity of one person. So we make recommendations in that regard. Again, the role is not just professional standards or internal affairs. It includes training and recruiting. So it's a big job, especially when you're seeking and, and looking to hire officers. We found that not all officers have received crisis intervention training, but the department has already moved on this. Looking at a vendor, I think the city of Sacramento, to provide that training to all staff. So it's excellent initiative and one that we, we certainly support as an agency. I mentioned the ancillary duties of sergeants and lieutenants and what they're doing. A necessity and probably enriches their careers, but it is a demand on their time. Again, we found the K-9 teams in the department, a valuable resource, but we found they only took about, they were five times a week did they get deployed. Where you need, you actually needed not just an officer, but the dog. There were limited hours of the mobile crisis support team, primarily their working days with weekends off. And so we believe there's an unmet demand for their services at night and on weekends. Again, another great service. The department has developed strong protocols that we found to manage overtime by recording and analyzing relevant data, providing managers with monthly overtime reports. It's, it's exceptional. The department's training plan is current, comprehensive, and was last updated in November of two thousand twenty. We believe another key finding that by filling vacant positions in dispatch, the department can reduce its reliance on overtime and reduce employee burnout and fatigue. There, Elk Grove is, is, this is a common problem in the cities we work with, the staffing issue in dispatch center. I don't know if anyone's figured this out. I had a trouble in my agencies, both Vacaville and Oakland. It's a tough, tough job. There is high turnover. People that want the job can't necessarily succeed in training. So it's not easy, not easy. Some police officers could not do this job. It's a very demanding job. We found that in financial crime, including fraud and identity theft, it needs a more robust focus and a unit dedicated to it. We also found the property unit, property crime would benefit from adding back staffing. They've lost staffing. It's, 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 it's been a juggling act trying to maintain staffing. You, you patrol is the backbone, as the chief has told us, and I agree. And so often you have to feed patrol before you can provide for other units. We recommend adding a, a traffic team to evening hours. We believe that would support patrol and restore traffic enforcement activity. And then gradually expanding the hours and staffing of the R-TIC. That seems inevitable, given the growing use of video and social media in policing. A great tool, a great tool. It just seems inevitable that, I know it's being used and called upon by other, other allied agencies too. Our key recommendations is to add a second lieutenant, and these again are over a five-year period. We're not suggesting you do these things now. Add a second lieutenant to the Professional Standards Bureau, given the demands that are really probably beyond the, the, the hours of limits of one person. We propose to revert to a three-shift system in patrol. You're currently at a four-shift system, including fifty-eight officers, eight sergeants, increased community service officers from ten to fourteen. And they would primarily be deployed at, in evening hours. Again, we see a spike in calls for service roughly around three P M. And so we think this is in line with that finding. Add an administrative lieutenant's position in patrol. This would help with that committed time for ancillary duties of sergeants and lieutenants, training, SWAT, and other, other duties that they carry. Would allow them to spend more time in the field with their staff, mentoring, developing, coaching them. Through attrition, we believe and recommend that the department can reduce the size of the K-9 program from six to four officers. Also, we believe that the traffic unit could be increased by adding and assigning four new traffic officers to swing shift team. Again, that's, that's where the bulk of police activity is occurring. And that's where we think the support of these officers, the support of these CSOs, along with the fifty-eight officers in patrol, and that administrative lieutenant would really help you there. We recommend that the city should consider hiring its own mental health clinicians. It would really provide, I think, the chief some flexibility so that he or she in the future can assign them to best meet demands for their service. Maybe it's nights, maybe it's weekends, maybe it's shifts to days. Maybe there's a different pattern in the summer. And so you'd have more flexibility in how you deploy these staff. We recommend you add an additional dispatcher and then convert four dispatch positions to dispatch call takers. I think this is an exceptional idea and something I think it would help your dispatch workload as you create this pathway for call takers to move to dispatcher if they succeed. If not, they can remain as call takers. Still relieving that pressure, if you will, on dispatchers. But it's a, it's a nice program, much like your CSO police recruit program, that I think would work well in your dispatch center. Call takers, it's a, it's a, it's a lesser included job. You're not, the heavy demand on training is dispatch. But this is a way for people to get in the door. You can assess them. They can learn over time the full role and take it on if they're, if supervisors deem that they would be successful. We believe you should conduct a comprehensive staffing and efficiency study separately of the bureau over the next two or three years when the staffing's up and you have a, a better sense of the workload and then additional staffing. So we, and not only looking at staffing, but also the schedule. We recommend adding, consider the addition of two city-employed homeless navigators, much like we said for mental health clinicians. You have the flexibility of, of assigning them as city employees to meet work demands and demands for their service. We also would suggest you consider funding a community prosecutor. We think there, this is like community policing at the prosecutor level where they can work with staff, address issues that you're seeing at Elk Grove that might not, might not otherwise be addressed, or the DA may not have the resources to address them. Homelessness, graffiti, vandalism, disturbance of the peace. Some prosecutor who could also be a resource to officers in writing search warrants and dealing with problematic persistent issues. You can have a prosecutor on-site to basically make it clear to officers, here's what I need if you want me to prosecute a case. But having that, that muscle, if you will, or prosecutor can often prompt action on the part of of, you know, the obstinate folks and business owner that doesn't want to take any action. A prosecutor there might prompt somebody to move. We also say conduct a staffing and efficiency study of, of the animal shelter after a few years. When enough data exists, we know it's new. I think it opened in two thousand nineteen. Just to conduct a thorough evaluation when enough data exists. And then we say add a second supervisor and an additional records technician to the records bureau. The technicians there, they're doing a lot of work with in-car camera reviews and redaction. It's really taking a lot of their time. And the supervisor not only has to fill in for the manager, but also the current one assist. And there's only one supervisor now. So that span of control of one to nine records technicians, as it exists today, we think that probably a broad span of control, given the Probably a broad span of control, given the demands in that position. So we recommend a second records technician. That's a snapshot of a of a large study of fifty six, I think, findings and fifty recommendations. But if you have any questions, feel free. I know a lot, but I don't know as much about Elk Grove as Chief does. So I'll I'll do what I can to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Thank you for that amazing presentation, Chief Ward. At this time, I will open up the public comment opportunity.
Ford, what we would ask from staff perspective is that if you can, at this point, discontinue sharing your screen. So then what that does allows us just in the Zoom environment to be a little more nimble. And so for our viewing audience in the Zoom or participating audience, this would be the opportunity for public comment on item nine point three of tonight's agenda. For anyone that's just jumping in, we jumped ahead a little bit. So you didn't miss anything in terms of the public hearing for redistricting or item nine, one or nine, two. We just advanced nine, three in the order. Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members, there were no written comments that were submitted in relation to nine point three prior to the meeting. As I take my attention back over to our listing of Zoom attendees, I do not see the raised hand feature being utilized. That's going to conclude public comment for item nine point three.
All right, I'll go ahead and close the public comment opportunity. And open it up for council comments and questions. We'll start with Councilmember Hume.
Thank you, Mayor. I was a little sympathetic there to have Chief Ward stop sharing his screen after all the effort we put into making that happen. So. Great, great report, and I really, I think I appreciate most your glowing. Acknowledgement of of our department and of the folks that were able to help you put that together. And I think that's a testament certainly to the chief's leadership. There was a lot packed into that report, and I'm mindful that we have a seven o'clock start time for the other items. So I'll try to get. To my most pressing questions here, but a couple of things that stood out to me. You know, there's been a lot of talk recently in in reallocation of police funding towards. Some of those softer skills of mental health and homeless navigators and that type of thing. And then you recommended, I believe. Bringing on more CSOs or augmenting the CSOs. One of the issues that I hear when I talk to officers, you know, that's. It's an inefficiency for sure, but it's also, you know, a drain on resources is when they talk about wall time. Or deadheading and. Did you or is this even something that you get engaged in relative to examining best practices? That would look at, you know, I look at it like this, that there are things that a sworn officer has the training and resources to do. With respect to keeping the peace and preventing loss of life. But once that threat of life has been mitigated. Is there an opportunity to hand the work, so to speak, off to someone who maybe is less of a. Payroll burden, if you will, but also to free up the resource of that officer that to then respond to something else. Is that something that gets examined or looked at or is maybe a shift happening within the department world?
It is something that we've we've seen in in our work where that very question, city council members, even chiefs are asking, can we do this safely? If you're having a C S O, a clinician, a family violence advocate, name the role. Homeless outreach person, you do need, I think you often do need, even for their safety, these these non-police workers. I think you do need a even for the fire department. They ask us to go in, leasing to first secure the scene. So that happens a lot. Now, informally, it changes department to department. I don't know if anyone's really doing it as a as a as a as a formal practice. It seems to happen informally. Someone says, hey, can you? Can you know, given what dispatchers learn about a call, they often will know. To send an officer first, maybe to secure the scene and then what resource comes in. Unfortunately. I think Elk Grove is an exception. Not many agencies have any other resource that's available, especially at night and weekends. Where it's 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 can get grimy, you know, and you're dealing with some rough issues at two A M. On a on a Tuesday morning. It's not always easy. Who wants to work those hours? It's that's that's the challenge. I tell you, most police officers supportive of alternative responses. Many have told us, well, what's the why wait? Will those day? They would love to have help. We've had him in Oakland for years before. The George Floyd incident years before at night. We did have them, but you know, when funding suffers. The funding tends to go to the police, to the sworn members first. And when funding cuts occur, and then you those resources often get cut, unfortunately. But I think you're right on track. I think there there's that we didn't do, I don't know, a deep dive. I think. If I wish we could have gone out in the car and spent time with officers to speak and see what they do each and every night. Maybe, I mean, that would be ideal to do that for six weeks. I think we would have would have learned a whole lot about the department, what officers are seeing, experiencing. I don't, I don't, I don't, I'm looking at your crime. Thankfully, it's it's relatively low compared to market agencies that we looked at. So you're you're doing well, maintaining it's the challenge.
That's that's great. I wish you'd had that opportunity too, because really we have an amazing department filled with amazing people. And to be clear, I am not suggesting in any way that we divert funding away from sworn. I'm suggesting that as we look at implement at this and growing the department, if there is a way to. To augment mine deficiencies in doing that. One of the more intriguing aspects that you brought up there was right there at the tail end, and it's. It's something that came up years ago, like, oh, I don't know, twelve, fifteen years ago. And that's the idea of looking at a community prosecutor. At the time, we were looking at it because you know, if you look at a traffic infraction, for example. Let's let's just say a red light violation, because that's an easy one for people to wrap their heads around. I think the current fine on that is four hundred and something dollars. Well, by the time. The revenue quote unquote, which is what most people accuse cities of doing of doing it as a revenue generator. We get pennies on the dollar of what the person is out of pocket to pay that fine. If you had your own community prosecutor, you keep the the entire proceed of that fund and it doesn't go into. Into the courts to process. But I'm more curious with respect to an incident, I'm going to talk about this a little more under council comments at the end of the evening. But as we look at dealing with our homeless population. And potentially implementing something along the lines of, let's just say, a drug court or, you know. A diversion treatment program that is looking not to incarcerate, but to compel. Folks to either accept mental health treatment, trauma treatment or abuse substance issues. Is that something that if we were to fund our own community prosecutor, would we be able to determine? What things do or do not get processed, excuse me prosecuted? Or are we still kind of left at the limitations of, you know, things like Prop. Forty seven or AB one oh nine or. Higher level mandates.
I I think there are those higher level mandates like AB one oh nine and probably would still fall under the larger DA's. Office in their domain of prosecutors, but this person, as I see it, my experience is they would help with the diversion. Meeting with they could meet with a complainant and a victim. And a defendant and maybe negotiate something unique. Where local resources do in fact exist and the prosecutor would know that. It's not the broad, it's not 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 looking for something broadly in Sacramento County, but something unique that Elk Grove does. It could be something in house where we've we've seen officers work with youth on diversion. Diversion so that a crime, a charge might drop off their record. It won't be, it won't be charged if they agree and a prosecutor pays close attention to these efforts. So I think there's a lot with, of course, I imagine the DA has to okay some some of this, if not all of it. But when you're funding it, I think you have a lot of leverage. I know you do. That's why I'm sure a lot of DAs like this because it allows. And I mean, it's good for an elected official to deal with some some issues where their constituents lie. And it's unique to Elk Grove. It's I think it's a positive effort as long as this person doesn't get lost into the fold of the larger DA's office and you don't see them. But then you could pull the funding too.
If I could jump in there real quick, Councilmember Hume, to your question. Each county is a little different with their community prosecution. Sacramento County has a really unique and I think really effective program. That really targets those quality of life issues and those smaller crimes that perhaps would go unprosecuted in the larger. Basket of of crimes that they receive daily and that that community prosecutor lives. Within the police department, has an office here and partners both with. Police officers, the organizations, businesses, community members. To really understand what quality of life issues exist. And they can carry that torch for us to prosecute those. Certainly, they would work, you know, hand in glove with our city attorney. Some of those overlapping things that perhaps our city attorney handles. That the community prosecutor would not have to handle. So it would allow us the opportunity for them to maybe carry. If we have a case that we want to be. To to ensure that it's handled appropriately and filed downtown, they would they would carry that for us. So really dealing with those things that otherwise we wouldn't, it would just fall in with the larger group. You know, we're funding that position and that community prosecutor then serves our community and carrying those. Those quality of life issues forward for prosecution.
So I'll note the time to hear our other item. Yeah, I'll yield back.
All right. So Chief Ward and Chief Albright, would you please stand by? So we can go on with item eight point one, because I'm sure a number of my colleagues will want to continue this conversation. All right, I appreciate that. So with that, we will transition back to item eight point one. Our public hearing regarding the redistricting project and I will turn it over to our city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members. I am Jason Lindgren, your city clerk, and we are here for another public hearing sequence in the wonderful world of redistricting. For tonight, what our focus is going to be is talking about communities of interest. Really talking about the updates of the outreach efforts and the rule that we're on the footstep of commencing the outreach process in earnest. And what the goals of that outreach process would contain. And then just some food for thought. When we look at redo local redistricting principles and kind of the stage that we go. I would like to be mindful of all of our parties here. And so what I will be pulling up is a presentation, be ready for a inundation of rainbow colors and small puzzle pieces. These aren't intended as something for us to focus on so much tonight. But really what this is, is a flyover of what's publishing to our city website for the redistricting project. So I'll be presenting kind of what this visual process is. When you start talking about redistricting and the elements that go into it. But let me pull up that presentation. It has a few more slides than what Chief Ward had, but I'll be promising that I will be moving through them. Rather quickly is kind of more of a tour of the process that we've been going through to date. And just let me pull up my screens here. And here we are for item eight point one. So our redistricting project for the city of Elk Grove, I'll be going over the updates of where we've come to date. Talk about some guidelines for what we're talking about when we look at redistricting in the process for drawing and three kinds of flavors, which is a federal, state, and then local consideration. So guidelines and rules that we have to follow as we go through this process. I'd like to preview some of our sources that are out there, although really I'm going to save those more or more for the workshops that you'll be hearing about that are coming in the near future. But then I'm roughly going to do have a overview of communities of interest that we've been generating for food for thought for the community to consider. But also along with that and contained within the staff report, we're thinking about additional criteria. When we get down to the redistricting process, down to the granular level of how we experience our community and how we decide where the lines are going to fall for this process. This is looking at kind of what are those Elk Grove elements that have been coming out of the discussions that I've been having out in the community. So redistricting website. Here's a QR code that we hope you're going to be seeing on Super signs around the city of Elk Grove. But also an opportunity, even in the Elk Grove citizen, we will be having this technology. If it works for the Super Bowl, it can work for Elk Grove as well. This directs folks to our central clearinghouse. It's the website for the city of Elk Grove for redistricting. Your city clerk, Jason Lindgren, which is me. I am your main contact for folks that are in the community that have questions, want to get involved, want to have me come out and give a presentation. I love talking, as you can tell, and I'm going to just keep going. I'll see how many breaths I can take. Where we are in the timeline, as you'll see, we started this process at the start of twenty twenty two, where I have it highlighted here for February twenty third. Is we're about midway through the process of talking about how we identify communities of interest. We had some initial presentations from our demographer, National Demographics. Corporation back at the beginning of February. But really, what's the add to this map is that March fourth, so we're talking just a couple of weeks away. I'm going to be asking our community that outreach with during the workshops to get as many submittals as they can before March fourth. It's really an administrative deadline for me to be able to compile the information that we received. So that as we lead into the public hearings throughout March, we have an opportunity to look at these submitted maps. One thing that's a difficulty is as we start marching towards a map or selection of maps for final consideration, if we start getting submittals that are still coming in by March thirtieth. We're really pushing deadlines in terms of what's feasible to project out to our public. And so what I'm asking is for the next couple of weeks for us to really focus in on how we want to divide up these maps. Part of our methods of workshop that are going to be happen very soon are part experimental and part very familiar. The very familiar part at the end are those in person workshops, which for the last two years, we haven't quite had the benefit of. But we have an ability to schedule these open workshops and they're in spacious areas. I'll be at Wackford Center tomorrow in one of the classrooms. Next week, we'll be back in the city council chamber, but we also have Laguna Town Hall, including its amphitheater. That's an outdoor event. And then we're going to be working up at the Barn Cafe. If you haven't been out there, great space, wonderful place, and we hope to make a lot of connections out there. But in addition to those in person workshops, part of my goal and what I've been testing out is the ability to use this Zoom environment to not only field people that show up in person. But to also feel people that want to log in online. And so I'm calling them teleworkshops because I'm going to copyright it and I don't know, who knows what's going to happen from there. But I think it's an interesting element in which we have this ability to reach folks from a variety of venues. And part of what I tried yesterday was to have a walk up outdoor event, actually over by where the new rap artwork is over at the avenue at District fifty six. And lo and behold, as I started the event, it started to rain, which is wonderful for California, not so great for walk up events for redistricting. But all I had to do was step into the wonderful facilities at District fifty six, and I still had an ability to have walk up encounters with folks. Not a lot of people were out in the rain yesterday. For our workshops, we have a few more here in February, which is tomorrow night at Wackford Aquatic Center. And then I'll have another one that'll start off at City Hall on the top of the week because we're still in February at that point on Monday. The workshops will continue into March and you'll see a couple of to be determined for those walk up outdoor events. And when I'm talking about a walk up outdoor event, what we're trying to do and from the staff perspective is indoor events, I think, are still going to have a level of concern for our members of the public. That are still concerned about whether there's masking requirements or not. They may be immunocompromised and want a different venue. And part of the outdoor event goal is to set up locations where I can actually interact with folks outside. We can have a dialogue, but keep it at a distance that's comfortable for folks. And if folks don't want to attend those, we can teleconference. So you'll see that all these are linked. And it provides this avenue for folks to link in via Zoom while we're having these kind of, whether it's in person, walk up events, whatever the the avenue might be. When we get to the redistricting rules and goals, this is the goal at the workshops, which is to start folks talking about what are the framework for when we're talking about redistricting. One of these elements and the avenues that we're using for online submittals is that we can get a lot of interesting submittals that may not go with the the guidelines. And really the goal of the workshop is to acquaint everyone with these flavors, which we're going over by our demographer last time. But it's really those categories of federal laws and protections. And this is when we think of protected classes for folks. And ensuring that districts aren't dividing groups of protected classes. We get into that second column, which is the California criteria for cities, and those are ranked in preference and order. But the one that's the most fun is that second one. It's about communities of interest and talking about that, and that'll be part of our dialogue this evening. And the third is the other traditional redistricting principles that occur at local levels. And this is where I'm looking to expand on some of this list, but dive into some of these questions with our discussion tonight. When we talk about map drawing, the program that we're currently offering is through Districter. We're still working to coordinate to see if there's some other options, just to give people a couple of different flavors that are out there. For tonight, I'm not going to dive so much into the map drawing program itself, but you're going to see its end results. And what I'd like to do is be able to reach out to folks that if they really want any kind of tutorials, but it's such an intuitive program. It's a lot of fun to get in there and just start painting by numbers. It's even kind of relaxing. So it's one of those things for a little stress. You can go do some redistricting and calm right down. So as we look at what the map program's offering, it's two flavors. It's going to offer an ability to do district maps. So that's the four district configuration of that equal population. But one of the fun elements too is communities of interest. So you don't have to get into the process and dictate what all the districts are going to look like. What you can do is advocate for what you believe is a community of interest that should be included in the consideration of a final map configuration. I think that all these elements of the outreach of giving people the tools in their hands. Is imparting to them what I call the map equation. This map equation is really what the basic question is and ask of what we need to get accomplished by the end of, at the end of March, start of April. Which is four districts. Those four districts need to be close to even divisions by population. So we're roughly counting at forty four thousand, one hundred and forty. I put the plus or minus. I put the plus or minus five percent because there's a little bit of variance that you can be given for as you move forward. That third bullet point is the four items that come from the state of California. Contiguous districts, communities of interest are considered. They're identifiable districts. It means there's easy boundaries to them and that they're compact. Those are four qualities that we're going to be looking for when we look at any map submittals, the four districts, close to even uh population and those four qualities. And the last part of Bart, the workshop is to touch base with our community to find out, do the final products that we're looking at make sense? How does it feel? How would we feel if we were inside of one of the districts prior from the effort in 2011? But those map levels changed at some point. And I think that's where we really get down from the mathematics that can occur, the art that occurs in between of drawing all these districts. But then it's that community feel. And it's been fun because through the outreach, I've been reaching out to all of our commissions and committees. And one of the constant ones that I keep coming back to is that when we look at a process like districting, I think one of the greatest skills that comes out of this is that you get an innate smell test. And it's a thing that we call in the clerk's world, when you have something that comes across the table, you give it a smell and you're going to go, hey, wait a minute. Something's wrong here or that looks perfect. And part of this is, this is truly an exercise where you can go through the process, look at submittals, and you actually start honing that skill of a, of a smell test and able to say, that's a great map. Or somebody's doing something funny with that map. It looks a little bit odd. So part of the staff report to put out there is it started talking about communities of interest. And it really is this crux that we're at is we are going to launch from talking about communities of interest, working in workshops to focus on communities of interest and get more information on that. But that's the springboard into creating our maps. And when we talk about communities of interest, one of the immediate ones that comes up is that that federal level. And it has that emphasis that it's one of the main protections that we're going to go, which is protected class. And we saw some of those images. I think I have a slide in here of some of those going forward. But then it's kind of interesting to talk about communities of interest. And what I've done is from a staff level, started putting forward maps that may be communities of interest that we want to give weight to as we're looking at final designs. And so I have a few examples, HOAs, subdivisions, tax districts, plan areas. And then of course, we're going to be looking for input from our community. So as I roll forward, protected class, these were the images from February 9th provided by our demographer. These were heat maps. And so this doesn't mean that there's only three uh protected class groups within the city of Elk Grove. These had the numbers that rose to the level that you can see some heat maps of where there may be communities of interest in the city of Elk Grove. And we're talking about a heat map. When it's purples and blues, that's going to be a chilled effect where the percentage is not that high. As you get into those yellow, greens, oranges and reds, that's the heat map element that says this is where you may have communities of interest. And part of these maps, I still have to get in and do a little bit of um delving into the Districtor program in order to draw up what those are going to look like in the Districtor program. Communities of interest, homeowner associations. So part of the process that I've been doing is using the Districtor program. And when you look at all these images that I'm presenting, on the left-hand side is going to be a source document that comes from the city of Elk Grove. That's using the geometry of the lines that are defined by streets. And what you're seeing is an end product on the right side that is actually the use of the Districtor program. And when you look at the Districtor program, what you'll see is those little granular bits of census blocks that fill in like a jigsaw puzzle into areas of the city of Elk Grove. What I'm doing with these maps for communities of interest for, just for, in a general curiosity, is taking maps of HOAs, which was uh one of the suggestions from Commissioner Singa from Planning Commission. But to take these elements and then equate them over into a map drawing over in the Districtor program. Now, give it a little bit of credence and the, that when you look at Districtor, what it does is it forces you to draw and color in by census block. And so it doesn't make clean cuts like the geometry that we do as opposed to the um, when you're looking at the left-hand side, where we have zones that are marked out by reasonable borderlines and streets. You don't always get that on the right-hand side with the census blocks. They'll blob out a little bit and kind of spill over into various areas. But what you're going to see is that these community of interest maps that are going up on Districtor are providing some data point that we have at the city of Elk Grove and translating it into these maps. So more communities of interest. Subdivisions, I got really into this one. This was a fun one. So you start looking at what we have marked from one of our maps from the city of Elk Grove about subdivisions and build out of the city. And then when I translate it over kind of into this map in the Districtor program, what it's all, what it's also doing is that when we jump onto it online, is that you're able to see what are the population counts that are going inside of these subdivisions. And so it's kind of gives you these bigger pieces of what might ultimately be maybe a tipping point for where you make a decision point of where a line goes or where a line maybe should shift to in order to include a whole build out of perhaps a subdivision. And of course, in Elk Grove, we have subdivisions that also are massive areas, but they build out in various phases. And sometimes those can happen over time. Another high-level view, tax districts. This is one of my favorites because I pay a street maintenance district in my district that um is different than other parts of the city. And part of it is we may have a community of interest when you have correlations. In the staff report, I also gave some images just of where Melrose text, uh, Melrose districts are. So when you talk about Poppy Ridge or East Franklin or Laguna Ridge, those are creating very distinct flavors to a community in terms of how it's maintained, the types of services that it's provided. Also the types of things that it encounters, right? So whether it's drainage or otherwise, there's a lot of different elements that go into the types of taxes, the divisions within the city of Elk Grove pay. And sometimes they start giving us some kind of block ideas about what starts making some definitive lines that we might consider when we get to drawing district maps. Plan areas are another interesting one. So as we look over from the source of our general plan and areas that we're identifying, and this is the one where I'm guaranteed I've started a fight in the rural area, is I put forward a Districtor map that I did as close as I could to the geometries that were allowed in the census blocks. And it looks a little different than actually kind of that, the rural area that we start looking at that's identified in maps from the city of Elk Grove. And sometimes those are those approximations that we're dealing with. But part of that is also, this is the springboard for a discussion point with our folks that are out in the rural area about, do those areas confine enough or do they need to be expanded? So the second part of the staff report kind of drifted away from actually talking about generating discussion on communities of interest and started a discussion about that last and third pillar. So when we talked about the pillar of federal requirements, the pillar of state requirements, we now have a pillar of local requirements. And once I've been going through the discussions with folks just about redistricting principles, certain topics start coming up that become very Elk Grove specific. And again, there'll be a lot of visuals on these. So as we go into population, one of the most interesting things I found is right out of the gates, we are doing redistricting almost two years after the fact. So census data stops on April 1st, 2020. Here we are, we're heading towards March of 2022. But staff pulled up the numbers to show where did development already occur over the course of just those two years. Now distance that a little bit from what's the image on the, the right side of the screen. The image that's on the right side of the screen was the same kind of analysis that our city staff did as they were headed into the 2020 census. So what this was is it's showing where are those new residential addresses that were appearing? And the map that's being shown on the right, that is in our current conditions by any means. What that was is that was a map that was conducted using the 2011 districts that were created and then sent to the Census Bureau to show them where development and growth was occurring in Elk Grove from 2011 up into the, the date of the 2020 census. And so if you were to take a similar function of those numbers that are being displayed in the table on the left of those residential builds, you would have a series of blue dots that would be showing you. We don't have that uh in a, in a graphic form, but you can just see by the numbers that kind of outpacing that's going. And if I can take your attention to the right and lower of the image for the residential addresses added, you'll see that those council districts of one, two, three and four will lo and behold, where did we see the most growth over that last 10-year period? Well, it was down in District Four and you can see that addition of new residential addresses. And you can also see that density down in the map, kind of digging away at what was an open space back in 2011, but became a very filled space over the course of a decade. Open space and planned growth. This is an interesting concept because when you look at any kind of a uh, any of our census block maps, when you see large expanses, so a block that looks like an enormous piece, puzzle piece, that means there are not, there's not a high density. When you get into areas that are higher density, what's going to happen is the puzzle pieces become smaller, more granular. And so when you look at an area, um, I mean, just looking at the map, what you will see are large expanses where we don't have a high population in Elk Grove. And it's kind of an interesting question as to how do we handle the open spaces? But we know that areas like the southeast uh policy area are planned for growth or Laguna Ridge is planned for growth. And as we've seen from the slide before, we already have growth over the last two years that we can't take into consideration as we're doing our numbers now. And so it's interesting to look at these maps. This is just a filter that you can do in the Districtor program to show the um, the densities that are going on when you pull up uh, how high a density the individual squares are that represent an area in on the maps. Another consideration of our criteria is maybe we think about how communities are built in Elk Grove by also what are the neighboring areas toward jurisdictions? And this is a segment that just comes from our general plan. And though those southern study areas are currently um open fields, part of the counter question is what's up on our northern borders? So do we have communities of interest that share those common borders with other jurisdictions? When we're west of State Route 99, that's a common border with the city of Sacramento. When we're east of 99, you have a borderline that's with the unincorporated area of Sacramento County. And there are effects that come from having neighbors on those sides. And is that a consideration when we're looking at district configuration maps? I think we've seen over in Laguna, the questions that come up with um, whether there's the interest of activities that are going on on Interstate Five. But it's also what's going on with Stone Lake's Wildlife Refuge or what's going on with the rail lines that go through. And those are things that go, those do go through the city, but they also uh neighbor north and to the south. And it's kind of a consideration of are there elements outside of our city of Elk Grove that actually might create a community of interest, an interest to our residents as we see how things develop outside of our borders? But it might be something where we want a unified voice of representation. Project areas become another interesting question. And that is posed in the staff report as that area of the capital southeast connector. Is that something that you want to see continuity for a district uh for interests of representation? I've mentioned about Interstate Five, State Route 99, they're major corridors that everyone uses. And how do those have an effect on how we create final district lines? Rail lines become a big question. And another one that came up that was rather interesting is about arena numbers, regional housing needs allocation. And when you talk about Rena numbers and balancing our districts, I think we got to a point in discussion of Rena numbers of what is the, what's the balance of um not only proposed housing, but existing housing amongst all the districts? And when we have an opportunity to look at where the district lines are, which are purely district lines for electoral representation, they don't actually represent um, you know, the uh, a physical barrier or anything of that nature. It's something that gets changed every 10 years. But sometimes there can be a balance in looking at the projects or the project concerns that affect the entire community. Is there a way to look at the districting effort to see about how can we balance our districts and look at where our lines go? For where we might allocate large expanses of area that actually still are not planned or still have not come forward. But it may bring some equity or dispersion of kind of maybe the um, the needs that we're looking for when we do a process such as regional needs, uh, regional housing needs allocations. District connection, I don't have a cool picture of this because we don't really have a district map that had this kind of connection. But should the districts meet somewhere? Is it a concern for us when we look at the qualities of maps, whether districts are completely separated from one another and not connected? And I think this is a discussion where we start looking at kind of the electoral process of Elk Grove in the next 10 years. And whether or not there is a desire if to have districts come together with at least commonalities of orders, maybe not meeting all in one place, but that they have a connection to the other districts as we look at what our governance is going to look like in the next 10 years. And of course, one of those things, if you were to think about district connection for Elk Grove, there's nothing that splits the pie more evenly right down the middle than looking at where State Route goes, State Route 99 goes through Elk Grove and that junction with Elk Grove Boulevard. It's just one of those things that if you're to look at a map, it's one of those natural features that you look right towards as to what's the center of town. One last one that I did is density and talking about when we start looking at numbers and where this density really came from was what were our existing uh districts? And when you think about our existing districts and you think about a principle of the density of maintaining what is going to be the population inside of a district that's going to carry from the next. And I think density, this is an interesting one about the anchoring of districts and whether someone changes where they were residing as a resident inside of districts from one place to the next. But I think it's interesting to look at these color combinations and get a sense that even though you can have a large expansive area, there may not be as much population that's involved. And I think when you get into that, go back to that map that was of subdivisions, that really gives you a sense of each puzzle piece, how much they can have in, in population. But when you start getting main anchoring areas of districts, you start getting into these numbers of seeing just what is the gravitational pull that becomes a necessity to get up to that number count of forty-four thousand, just north of forty-four thousand for a district. You really have to start taking these higher density areas with a heavy weight of population. And those are going to be drivers that pull in other areas of Elk Grove to start creating districts just because we have the requirement to get over forty-four thousand in population. That's going to conclude all the visual funness, except for the QR codes for folks that like staring at those. But I really suggest you put your phone up to it and it'll jump you to the website. And really what all of these images that were provided um and all of the process of the workshops of the work done to date, the capacity to find out where are, where is a workshop or how can I sign up for a public hearing? The driver is our website and it is our redistricting site. This is publishing up all this information. It's as near time as it can be. I won't guarantee that if you submit a map that it'll go up right away. But I'll let you know that as of today, we already have three uh district map submittals. And so those are up. And what you'll see is a little bit of a tweak because there are some functions in the program to make sure that everything's been filled out. So what will happen is I'll post up kind of my end staff version, which just fills in little holes if people missed it as far as filling in the population counts. Um, but we've got three maps. We have a lot of workshops ahead of us. Um, there's tons of data that's out there and we want to hear about it. And that's the process that we have moving forward.
All right.
I'll open it up to questions.
All right. At this time, I'll open up the public here, the public hearing and public comment opportunity.
And so for our members in the attending audience, this is the opportunity to speak on item eight point one using that raise hand feature. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council members, uh, there were no written comments that were received in relation to item eight point one prior to the meeting. As I look back over to our listing of attendees, I do not see the raised hand function being utilized. With that, that will conclude public comment for this evening on item eight.
All right. I'll close the public comment opportunity and open up for um council questions. And if I can ask um the Vice Mayor to preside over the next minute while I go um, address something really quickly.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, look for any questions. I see end up, Mr. Councilmember Spees, go ahead.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm Jason. I, I don't have any questions, but I got to tell you that I'm in one of those industries that people don't find exciting in the least, and that's cybersecurity. I find that very similar to uh this redistricting process. No one ever wants to know how the sausage is made. Um, but you did a very good job in explaining it and getting um, getting a lot of that information forward. Um, so I want to thank you for giving a very um important, informative presentation. And I look forward to us uh moving on to getting some maps done. So thanks, Jason. That, that was a compliment if you didn't recognize that.
I definitely, I think I've told uh, the Elk Grove citizen before, um, when people are really into chess and they follow chess, the, the game is amazing and the strategy. If you're not into chess, it's not that interesting, but I, I think that's the beauty of our world. We have lots of uh disciplines and part of it is to be able to share them with folks. So they either resonate or they don't, but still you can do a lot of fun art and mathematics as I keep selling with redistrict.
But one day I got to get you to uh give cybersecurity presentations. I'm sure you'll uh do well.
That's hilarious. I'm back, by the way. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll, I'll hand this back over to you. And I just want to add on to Councilmember Spees's comment. We're just very fortunate to have a city clerk who's so passionate about this uh subject matter. So also well done. Appreciate the information, Jason.
I think it's fun. I got to take part in it in 2011. It's almost like being able to see Haley's comment back around uh to come back into it and just jump right back into the discussion.
Great.
Oh, I don't see any other hands raised for my colleagues. I'll just add that you're clearly very passionate about this and I'm looking forward to seeing the maps that have already been submitted and seeing um some expanded community engagement. Really encourage our residents to come forward and participate in this process and appreciate the participation for those that have already participated. And then of course, our different commissions and committees and sharing their input, which will be invaluable as we make that important decision uh of redistricting our boundaries. So thank you again um to you, Jason, for that.
I think if I could just put the final plug, it's uh, I had a lot of folks that responded back to me and they said, what can I do? And really it's spread the word and direct. And really it's spread the word and direct people to that clearinghouse at the website because that's where all the tools are. You can engage at any level that you want. You can meet in person. You can come and visit us via Zoom. You can also draw maps from afar and submit them in. And we'll go through the process to give a projection of what the anticipated hope is from staff perspective is that as we come back for March 9th, we're going to have hopefully a listing of maps. And I hope to use some of that criteria that was discussed this evening, but also those main three pillars, federal, state and those local considerations to give a grade actually to the maps that are submitted so that as council looks at them, you'll just get a perspective of when staff looks at these maps. This is our feedback from them and it's going to be kind of a, it's not A through F. It'll be, I think it'll be red light, green light, yellow light. So it's whether, whether they, they're hitting on items or whether there's a concern that comes up with a configuration. But to try and synthesize those, so pull like ones together, have some grades that go with them just to give a, a sense of how do they meet the criteria for Elk Grove? And then from there, select some maps for a final process to start putting them under the scrutiny of the demographer and move from there.
For sure. Thank you. Well, we look forward to the process.
Great.
All right. With that, we will now resume back on item 9.3. And I will let our council member Hume finish his questions. For both chiefs, thank you both for standing by.
Thank you, Mayor. And now that we're back, I, I think we were discussing the community prosecutor at the time that we broke for the redistricting conversation. And I just want to say that I am highly in support of the general principle of this. I realize it doesn't come without a price tag. But I feel, I think I may have been a little bit misleading on the previous time we discussed what a community prosecutor might, I see John Hobbs just raised his hand. Did I run afoul here, Mr. Hobbs?
No, no, you're fine. I was gonna, I'll let you finish because I think you're probably about to say what I'm about to say. But why don't you go ahead and speak? And if I can clarify anything, I'm happy to do that for you.
Okay. I was just going to say that if I, I think I was wrong about the effort that we looked at that would have to do with recouping or, or at least receiving infraction fines relative to what a community prosecutor do. So I was just going to turn it over to the chief and ask if he might explain or Mr. Hobbs, what, what?
Let me see if I can touch a couple of points on that, Councilmember Hume, and certainly Chief Albright can, can chime in and supplement or correct if, if need be. The notion of a city prosecutor, which you're probably familiar, we, we've considered that before on behalf of the City of Elk Grove. If we're going to do a true city prosecutor, that would generally require the DA's consent and creates an office within the city attorney's office. What I think we're talking about in it, in it, and that would not necessarily impact revenues one way or the other. What I think we're really talking about and invite the chief to chime in on this is a notion that we would have somewhat of a dedicated prosecutor in the district attorney's office. And the district attorney's office does have a pretty robust community prosecution unit, which my office and the chief's office have worked with pretty closely. The Assistant City Attorney Suzanne Kennedy, as you know, does a lot of a community, for lack of a better term, prosecution. It's typically on the civil abatement side, which is extraordinarily effective. And a lot of times when you can impose civil abatement remedies, that cures the problem quite often. We do have some outliers and the council's familiar with some of those, but those are pretty effective remedies. So with that, I'll pause unless there's any questions or if the chief would like to chime in and, and supplement on what I just said.
Before he does, you, you just nailed the, the right on the head, John. We were looking at a city prosecutor previously versus a community prosecutor, which is what we're talking about now. Thank you.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you.
Uh, let's see, Councilmember Spees, any questions?
Not real sure why my computer wants to misbehave. You'd think after two years we'd get this right. I do want to thank, thank you, Chief Albright and thank you, Chief Ward, for your, for your assessments. And I'm really glad to hear that, you know, Elk Grove's standard of excellence is certainly high. That's, that's what the community expects. And I'm so glad that we're delivering that. And I think this report gives us the opportunity to continue to go even higher in excellence. I guess this is more of amusing. I don't know that there's an answer for it and it might be contrary to what others have said. I guess one of my concerns when it comes to mental health issues and when it comes to, when it comes to prosecution is that I look at those perhaps wrongly. I don't know, but I look at those as county responsibility. And it, it tends to, it tends to make me wonder why we aren't pushing further or harder for those from the county. If that's, you know, where the responsibility is in the first place. So again, I'm, I'm not naysaying that's, that's simply, you know, a, an observation from the top. But I definitely appreciate the, the work and I look forward to evaluating it more as, as we go along. Thank you.
Councilmember Wen?
No questions. Thank you for the presentation.
Vice Mayor Sun?
Thank you, Mayor. Also, thank you, Chief Albright and Mr. Ward. I would, I just want to thank you, Mr. Ward, for affirming what I've believed for some time about our, our department. And again, this goes to credit to Chief Albright and, and others before you on your leadership that being an example department. And I, I still believe that and I'm just nice to see the data supporting it. My, my question, I guess, result revolves around your SWAT analysis. And I was wondering if you could articulate the threats as, as a, you know, putting my planning hat on. I'm just curious what, if there's any specifics that are on the horizon that we should be aware of. And while you're thinking about that, I, I do also, I, I definitely support the, those additional needs supporting the Arctic property crime units and supporting the, the mental health space. And, and we've counselors, I see benefits of having our own staff to, to, to provide service in those areas when we need it. So anyway, go ahead if you, if you wouldn't mind.
Yeah, that's a great question. As I, as I think of the responses, there was a lot of concern with officers and some professional staff. They would say that, and I've talked to the chief about, about this, patrol is understaffed. And in this environment where people are suggesting defund or reform or reimagine policing. Or we, or is the department less likely to recruit candidates when at the same time we're understaffed? So there was a big threat, a big concern there. When we talked to the chief and looked at the data, we saw that they have a lot of unobligated discretionary time. And they could get time off, I think 28% of the officers, 28% of the time they can get time off, be it training, vacations or some compensatory leave. So they're getting the time off. So in looking at the data, the calls for service, the unobligated time discretionary, that self enforcement time. We felt 58 was a, it was a good number for the department with eight sergeants. As you would add, add officers, of course, you're probably going to need to add sergeants. That number may grow as you, I know you're, the city's bringing in a casino and possibly some other zoo and a hospital and new housing and new business. I suspect that number will have to slowly trickle up over time. Chief's aware of it. I'm sure Assistant Chief Davis is too. The four shift model was a concern for officers. And so when talking to the chief and other staff, command staff and patrol, we felt the three shift model was better for morale. I think most officers appreciate the place where they work. I, I would hope they appreciate it. It's a great place given what we found. I would hope they appreciate it. They should. But you know, you always have the, the naysayers, but those were the common themes, if they were threats or weaknesses, if you will.
Yeah.
That's what we found. But the analysis didn't always agree with the perception of short staffing. We did find a gradual shift away from the night shift going back five or six years. And that, that may have coincided with the change in schedules. So that's why our focus was let's kind of boost swing shift with traffic and CSOs. And I think the department will be in good shape in, in field operations.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. And I, I definitely appreciate the, the risk or, or threat, if you will, of, of lowering morale. And, and, and so that's one, but I wanted to make sure that there wasn't something more, you know, threatening in terms of, I noticed the slight rise in property crimes just, just lately according to your, to your study. But I just want to make sure, because I, I do feel like it's still a very safe community and I think others feel the same. And so I just want to make sure we, we weren't, you know, worried about anything more, more ominous than that. So appreciate, appreciate those insights. Thank you.
Thank you. Want to really thank Councilmember Hume for his excellent question. So a lot of my questions were answered there. But I do want to thank you, Chief Ward, for, for this study and the information. As it relates to mental health, I, you know, as a former school board member, I know how important this is. And as a city, school district, the county, the state, we all play a role as it relates to mental health. And to the extent, you know, when, whenever it is the right time, I definitely see the value of mental health clinicians. Because so many of our officers who put themselves in harm's way. I've gone on, I think, four ride alongs at this point over the last year. And that is something that I've heard. And a number of things that were shared in this study, I of course, did hear from a number of our officers that reinforce what you presented this evening. So I wanted to thank you for that. And then as it relates to the community prosecutor, the district attorney's office, I've had conversations there and I know that there is interest. So I love to see how this sort of unfolds over, over time and, and see how, what we can do with that. But just thank you for an excellent presentation and thank you both, Chief Albright and Chief Ward for this. Thank you for staying on.
Thank you.
All right. With, with that, we'll move on to our next item, which we're going back and it is 9.1.
That'll be an invite to our budget staff for receiving the 2021 mid-year budget report and just a resolution amending fiscal year 2021, 22 budget and approving a change to the position listing and adopting an update to the citywide salary schedule.
All right. Greetings, everyone. I thought I was going to get punted a little later, but we can get the show on the road. See. All right. I'm going to try to, try to share a screen. All right. Uh, can someone confirm that they are seeing a PowerPoint in front of them?
So Mr. Norrion, what I'm seeing, you're in the design mode. So if you just want to go to the slideshow mode and then please proceed. Looks good. Please proceed.
Awesome. Thank you. Thanks, Jason. All right. So. Oh, wrong presentation. That's the next item. Back to back. All right.
You threw me off there.
Getting ahead, getting ahead of the finance department here.
Maybe we should go backwards.
All right. Greetings, Mayor Singh Allen, Vice Mayor Sun and fellow city council members. My name is Shane Norrion, serving as the city's budget manager. And I'm here today to present a mid-year review of the current year budget. And before getting started, I'd like to thank senior finance and budget analyst Maria Phillips and finance and budget analyst Matt Ruiz for assisting with the staff report and resolution. So we're going to start with the general fund on the revenue side. There are a variety of general fund revenue sources, each with their own nature of business. The table before you focuses on significant revenue sources that have projected variances at year end shown on the far right. The bottom line shows that at mid-year, general fund revenues are currently projected to be greater than the revised budget by over $10 million at year end. Therefore, staff recommends to increase the budget for these sources to align with current projections. But of all the variances between the current proposed revised budgets shown above in the far right column, the most notable are in sales tax, property tax, transient occupancy tax and great place revenue. So current projections indicate receiving $37 million of sales tax by year end, which is over 4.6 million more than the revised budget. I can tell you the unpredictability of the economy during the post COVID recovery era has made revenue forecasting somewhat challenging. The positive performance of sales tax activity in the current year is substantially driven by auto sales activity being allowed to continue during the pandemic. And we, we've all experienced and seen it perhaps even personally, some of the supply chain issues and the inventory issues that are out there in the market, driving up prices of new and used vehicles. So it has had a positive impact actually on sales tax. And then also activity recovering in the restaurant, hotel and fuel station sectors. So property transfer taxes are taxes on real estate sales within the city. The county has been providing the city with property transfer tax revenue reports on a quarterly basis. Based on the most recent report, actuals at mid-year trending above budget, which indicates strength in the Elk Grove real estate market. Transient occupancy taxes, also known as hotel taxes, have been trending above budget projections for most of the fiscal year. The positive trend is attributed to what we've been seeing as a recovery in hotel sales activity from the impacts of COVID and from a occupancy at a recently opened Marriott Town Place Suites. Expenditures for the Great Place Deliver program occurred in prior fiscal years, utilizing our general fund reserves and savings. The timing of the grant reimbursement was unknown when developing the current year budget. Hence, staff, staff is seeking to amend the revenue budget at mid-year. The funds received are reimbursing prior year drawdown of reserves to fund the, the delivered program. So that's about half of the 10 million, okay, is the great plate side of things. So in a way, if you exclude that from the 10, you're literally looking at a $5 million expected additional revenue amount at year end. So now flipping to the spending side of the general fund. City spent about $31 million, which is about 39% of the current revised budget at mid-year. Current spending trends will likely result in a savings of over $1.5 million by year end. The primary sources of savings, the general fund are associated with salary and benefits or compensation. At mid-year year date savings so far in compensation is nearly $1 million. Staff anticipates over $500,000 in additional savings in the second half of the year. A substantial portion is due to ongoing vacancies in the city and delayed hiring of certain positions. So before you is a table displaying general fund spending information at mid-year. The bottom line shows that the $31 million spent at mid-year is in the YTD activity column. And the over one and a half million projected savings is in the projected YE budget variance column, as mentioned in the previous slide. The projected overage and benefits is associated with an additional one-time opportunity given to staff earlier this fiscal year to cash out annual leave. The fiscal impacts of this one-time opportunity were not included nor anticipated in the original budget. Based on trends analysis currently at mid-year, staff recommends reducing the salary and benefit expenditures to that net amount equal to the current projection. Staff also recommends transferring the, the one and a half million dollars, right, that we're talking about right now on this slide is the savings. Coupled with the combined $5 million, right? I talked about a little bit earlier in previous slides in sales tax, property tax in lieu of VLF, property transfer tax, TOT and franchise fees, revenue budgets presented in the, those slides over to the capital reserve. So that would be a total of about $6.6 million combined proposed to be transferred to the capital reserve. So moving away from the general fund to some major non-general funds, specifically development related funds. For development services, revenues have been trending above budget projections primarily in development engineering. There are several residential development projects that have progressed into the tentative and final map phases this year. This activity was unanticipated when developing the current year budget, resulting in higher than expected revenues at mid-year. However, positive revenue trend in this case will be followed by higher-than-expected spending as well as a result of the additional work that needs to be performed with the activity. Most major citywide development impact fees are trending close to budget, indicating that building permit activity is aligning close to expectations. Except for roadway fee, for which revenues are trending significantly higher than budgeted projections. The main driver behind that upward trend is unanticipated commercial development fee collections, which were not included in the budget. Revenues for the Laguna Ridge Park fees, though unfortunately, have been heavily impacted by lower-than-anticipated building permit activity in that geographical area in which affects those funds. That's resulted in revenues trending slower than budgeted. So moving away from the budget status side of things, and then over to the proposed amendment side. Recall on the previous slide that we recommended transferring $6.6 million in additional funding to the capital reserve fund, as mentioned in the previous slide. The commercial development revenue received in roadway fee is much greater than anticipated. So staff is recommending to increase the revenue by $3 million accordingly in the budget. Staff also recommends an additional 2.6 in budget revenue to align with the overall higher-than-expected development services activity, as I was talking about in the previous slide. Consequently, staff also recommends an additional 1.2 million in budget spending to accommodate the overall higher-than-expected workload in development services. So the additional expenditure amount is based on monthly averages of spending so far, but could result in higher spending from this year into rolling into next fiscal year due to lags in the billing activity. And then this slide is dedicated just to public works, budget, proposed budget amendments. Staff is proposing to increase spending budget in the drainage fee by $2.3 million for the Southeast Industrial Area Storm Rain Improvements Project WDR 52. The proposed funding will allow advancement into final design and right-of-way acquisition and construction for the project. The proposed infrastructure from the project will provide ultimate drainage facilities for the Kubota projects, as well as the remainder of the city property in the Southeast Industrial Area. Oh, and they're also proposing to increase their budget in the drainage fee by $300,000. Last July, a large section of 30-year-old storm drain pipe under the Sheldon North Drive was discovered to be collapsed. So last November, emergency design testing and construction work was completed. Staff recommends increasing the budget to cover the costs for repairing the pipe. To continue with the theme here of increasing the drainage fee budget, Engineering Services is proposing an increase of $50,000. The Public Works Department has experienced ongoing changes with the way development reviews are performed, increasing levels of service for the maintenance of drainage facilities, as well as staff turnover. Due to these factors, Engineering Services recommends hiring a consultant to evaluate ongoing drainage engineering service needs and organizational improvements. Staff recommends amending the budget to cover the consulting cost. And then finally, recycling and waste is proposing to increase budgets in the residential and commercial enterprise funds by $125,000. Last December, a recycling and waste coordinator resigned from the city and leaving behind a gap, large gap, in institutional knowledge for implementing Senate Bill 1383, which requires mandatory organics recycling statewide. Although the city is pursuing a recruitment to fill the position, it is reasonable to assume that they will not have the background and working knowledge of Senate Bill 1383 to ensure the city is fully compliant by the end of the calendar year. As a result, recycling and waste recommends hiring a specialized consultant with expertise in the area. So we're recommending increasing the budget for that. And moving on then past the operating budget increases and then on to position control changes. So the table before you show staffs recommended changes to the fiscal year 2122 position listing and to the citywide salary schedule as well. All these changes are reclassifications to current positions, not adding any new positions. The columns listed from the left to the right are the department that's requesting the reclassification, the title, current title of the position, and the proposed new title, and the funding source for the position, and then the annual fiscal impact of the change. All the funds listed have sufficient available fund balance to support these changes. For finance, the workload associated with growth in staff has presented challenges in keeping abreast of payroll laws and regulations efficiently and effectively. Reclassifying an accounting tech to apparel tech will alleviate the workload of the senior apparel tech in order to allow focus on more complicated transactions. Senior Human Resources Analyst will be a strategic partner to the Human Resources Director in the department's, city's effort to attract, employ, and retain a highly qualified, diverse, and service-oriented workforce. A recent desk audit revealed that the scope of duties, breadth of responsibility, and requisite knowledge and abilities assigned to the Real Time Information Center supervisor are more consistent with the manager level classification, as the staffing and scope of the Arctic has recently grown. Over the past year, the Assistant Planner has been assigned a higher volume of complex planning projects to meet the continuously growing demand placed on planning applications. The position has also been assigned to manage project budgets, assuring account balances are kept current. So those duties are more consistent with an associate planner. The Administrative Analyst 2 position has experienced significant changes to the tasks and responsibilities required, more consistent with the management analyst, performing a full range of financial duties, overseeing and managing several computer systems, providing reports, and recommending operational changes, including all of the work that the Admin Analyst 2 currently performs. So that is the end of the content section of my presentation. So I would like to go ahead and provide a recommendation that council adopt resolution amending the fiscal year 2122 budget, approving the changes to position control, and approving an updated citywide salary schedule.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Norrion, for your report. At this time, I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity.
For members of the participating audience in the Zoom environment, now would be that opportunity to use the raised hand feature for item 9.1. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, there were no written comments that were submitted prior to the meeting in relation to item 9.1. As I take my attention over to the listing of our attendees, I do not see the raised hand feature being utilized. And that'll conclude public comment under item 9.1.
All right. I'll close the public comment opportunity and open it up for questions from colleagues. I'll start with councilmembers Spees. Any questions or comments?
Thank you. I'm sorry, I don't have any questions or comments. I appreciate the presentation, Shay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Hume?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have just a couple of questions, Shay. First question, and you may have said this, but I just want to verify it. The 5.3 million for the Great Plates Program, that was an expenditure in a previous budget year, and this money came in as a reimbursement?
Yeah. So we already spent the money on the program in past years, and we had not received, we had received a very, very small fraction of reimbursement while we were actually spending on the program. So for the billions of dollars we spent, we had to draw down from current reserve, from the reserves at the time. So drawing down and dipping into that. So the reimbursement, we didn't really know when it was gonna be arriving to the city when we developed the budget. It came, we got the 5.3 in totality in December. So for mid-year, we're basically asking to reimburse the reserves, basically, that we drew down in past years.
Is that what we drew down, the reserves by 5.3 million?
Uh, no, because I believe it's about 5.6, but we were reimbursed for a couple hundred thousand of the costs in past years. Yeah.
And now you're proposing to build those reserves back up by 6.6 million. Did I get that correct?
So, right. So the 5.3 is going to stay with the general fund reserve, whereas the 6.6 is taking not from the great plates, but it's taking from the, taking from the additional taxes and fees that we're collecting other than great plates, and then the one and a half millions in savings. So.
So the 5.3 is going to our economic uncertainty reserve, then? Versus the 6.6 is going to our capital projects reserve?
Mm-hmm. They're two completely separate, separate funding sources.
Sure. Got that. Great. And then this is the next slide I wanted to talk about. So good to see that. The 1.6 variance there for the salaries, where we've come in under our projected amount for salaries, is that being slated to be moved over to reserves, or does it get absorbed somewhere else in the budget?
It's gonna be 1.5 net. So if you look at the bottom of that column, that one, yeah. So because the 1.6 is offset by the 100K overage in benefits due to the one-time cash out that we didn't know was gonna happen when we did the budget. So it ended up netting out to 1.5 in projected savings. And yes, so that is part of the 6.6. So you've got 1.5 in spending, and then you've got, you've got what, about 5 million in revenue, additional revenue.
Okay. And then on the reclassifications that you put up, each of those amounts seemed fairly, yeah, seemed fairly small, but those are annual amounts that are in addition to what the current title compensation would be. Is that correct?
Right, right. Annualized, annualized impacts.
And are those costs, again, not that that's a significant amount of money, but are those costs built into that 1.5 savings that we just talked about?
No, no, they are not. So let's go back to that. So then you would, you would see the activity slightly higher by year end. If you look at the column that says the current projection, right? So the current projection then could be affected by those very minor increases and could negate that 1.5. However, the 1.6 in salary projected savings, and I mentioned, you know, we have a million dollar year-to-date, right? And that's what I said kind of early on. I said, year-to-date, we have a million dollars. And I said, I would participate additional 500,000 in the second half of the year. That's a pretty conservative number. To be honest, it could very well be more than that. I made an assumption with this 1.6 that a lot of the vacancies that we have right now, especially in the police department, that we're gonna be filling them on a more rapid basis, which is probably not a real, not that realistic of an assumption, to the point where those costs, especially for the general fund, which I think most of those positions were general fund-funded, is easily, easily absorbed.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure the budget was balanced with those projections. Thank you. Appreciate it, Shay.
Yeah.
Councilmember Wen?
No questions. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Soon?
Thank you, Mayor. Just nice to see our sales tax numbers are coming in a little higher than projected. Thank you, Shay. As always, you give a very informative, detailed presentation. Appreciate it.
You bet.
Thank you. Echo the same comments. Great presentation. Great to see our projections for our sales tax. And then, of course, the TOT, and seeing the hospitality economy rebounding and showing some of that resiliency. So thank you for that. Good to see that. Very encouraging as we come out of this pandemic. So thank you again. And with that, we will go on to our next item. Have a good evening.
If we go.
Oh, sorry. Yes, I got ahead of myself.
Rewind just a little bit.
Yes, if I can get a motion.
I'll move staff's recommendation to adopt the resolution.
Very good. We have a motion in a second?
And with the motion in a second, I'll move to the roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Wen.
Aye.
Councilmember Spees.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Soon.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
Resolution of item 9.1 will pass 5-0.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Norrion. Now we will go on to item 9.2.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Matt Pollan, your finance director. I'll be presenting the next item despite Mr. Norrion's best efforts.
Welcome.
Thank you.
This your first time up, Mr. Pollan?
It is.
Great. I thought so. Nice to see you.
Okay. Can you verify that you can see my screen?
Indeed. Looks like, and looks like you're heading towards the slideshow presentation. All looks good. Please proceed.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Clark. So I'm here to present the second year of the ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act Expenditure Allocation Plan. And at the end of my presentation, will be recommending a resolution that approves the second year allocation plan, authorizes the manager to amend the budget to reflect the revenues, and increases the budgeted expenditures commensurately. And also amends the current CIP program to increase the budget for the Southeast Industrial Area Storm Drain Improvements Project. Sounds familiar, Mr. Norrion, just brought up the design and engineering phase of that project. This is the construction portion of that project to be funded from a portion of our ARPA funds. So just to refresh your memory a little bit, the ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act, was a massive spending package intended to offset the negative economic impacts of the pandemic. It had a number of expenditure provisions, many of which that you can see here, some pretty significant ones. And a portion of that funding also went to governments to combat the economic impacts of the pandemic. Of course, governments were expending a great deal of money directly on COVID-related issues. And of course, their communities, our community, was also negatively impacted by the pandemic. And that's what these revenues were intended to address. And of course, the city was scheduled to receive almost $22 million over two equal payments. We did receive that first payment in June of 2021, and we anticipate receiving the second payment here in a few months in May. At the time that we presented this issue to you last July and August, the U.S. Department of Treasury had issued an interim rule, which outlined how the funds could be used. They finally got around to issuing the final rule at the beginning of January. And it takes effect in April, where we can use funds in accordance with those stipulations now. It does give us more flexibility, which is wonderful, and outlines that we have to spend the funds by the end of 2024, obligate the funds by the end of 2024, and then fully spend them by the end of 2026. We've got a good deal amount of time to put the funds to good use in the community. So what you did prior is, as I was saying, in July, late July, we presented a funding allocation plan to you. And that funding allocation plan for over both years, both payments that we're anticipating, was based on extensive outreach and survey feedback in the community. You all did approve the first year's plan, but postponed taking action on the second year. I don't know if you recall that the Elk Grove Water District had asked for some funds, and you wanted to give us more time to kind of work out all those details. And so that's what we're here with you tonight to present the details and some other changes with the plan. And then at that next council meeting after the one in July, we came to you with all the necessary budget actions needed to implement the first year's spending plan. So here was that first year's plan that you all approved back last year. About 2.7 million for government support, some for the city and some for the Kasumnas CSD. Six and a half million to support businesses through our Small Business Grant Program, which is currently the second, the second go at it is open now and closing March the 15th. And our nonprofit grants too, which is currently open, open now, I believe, or closing pretty soon. And then we had also flexible homeless solutions and workforce development and job training pieces as well to fully account for that first year's payment. So here's the second year, as we proposed it to you back then. Also, again, funds for both the city and Kasumnas CSD. But for business, it was generally for business broadband and for economic development. And then more funds for flexible homeless solutions and workforce development and job training to account for that second year's anticipated payment from the treasury. So here is our revised second year allocation plan. You can see that we still have city revenue loss and COVID expenditures, but nothing for CSD. And I'll get into that on the next slide. You can see that there's some funding for the Elk Grove Water District for a couple of projects to replace water mains in the Old Town area. And you can see there's still funds for business broadband, albeit a little less. And you could also see that we were allocating what used to be the economic development category to a specific project, which is the Southeast Industrial Area Storm Drain Improvements Project. And then the last bucket, the disadvantaged community support, remains the same as it was last year. Storm drain improvements project. And then the last bucket, the disadvantaged community support remains the same as it was last year. So again, those key changes to the expenditure plan is adding two projects for the Elk Grove Water District. Uh, these projects are the Elk Grove Boulevard Grove Street Alley Water Main Project and the Locust Street Elk Grove Boulevard Alley. Der Street Water Main Replacement Project. As I mentioned, uh, we took out the Kasumna C S D second year allocation and put it in uh the city revenue loss. Uh, category and C S D was was very fortunate to get one of the larger actually allocations from the state of California for. For COVID uh funds. Uh, as you know, that the special districts did not receive a direct allocation from from the treasury. But the state and local governments could pass on funds as we did and as the state uh did to C S D for COVID related expenditures. So the district uh and has talked about it and we both mutually agreed that that the city's allocation was no longer needed since they got. It was about three and a half million or so from from the state and we could put that to good use in the community and the city by retaining it with us. So as I mentioned before, we're allocating the that the general economic development funds to the specific Southeast Industrial Area Storm Drain Improvements Project. As Shay was saying that that project is going to really. Um, provide drainage facilities for a number of really important industrial projects and that and that neck of the woods. And provide for some good economic development opportunities for the city and the community. And we also want to recommend that allowing the city manager to recount reallocate any unused funds into the city revenue loss to COVID expenditures category. As we move along with a number of our our programs, I mentioned the small business loan program. And the nonprofit grant program for for two examples. Uh, we're. Making our best efforts to allocate all those funds, but in the event that there's leftover funds. We would want to allocate and move those to the city revenue loss category because that gives us the most flexibility. Of course, I think the one thing that we all want to. To do is not give any of this money back. And so that category gives us a lot of flexibility to make sure we put that money to good use before the end of twenty twenty four and twenty twenty six. So as I started off with, our recommended action is for you all to approve a resolution that approves that second year expenditure plan as I laid out. Authorizes us to amend the twenty one twenty two budget to reflect that ten point nine odd million dollar revenues and. Increases budgeted expenditures and then in the special fund, which is called the disaster recovery fund that we set up by the same amount. And also amends the uh twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six capital uh C I P program to. Uh, allocate those economic development funds to that Southeast Industrial Area Storm Drain Improvements Project for the construction phase. So that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Pollen. At this time, I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity.
And for our members participating in the Zoom environment, this would be the opportunity to address item nine point two with public comment. As I move over to uh. My attention onto my listing, mayor, vice mayor and council members, there were no written comments that were submitted prior to the meeting in relation to item nine point two. And as I look back, we do have a member of the public that would like to address the council on item nine point two. I'll pull up that speaker timer now. If I may ask Mr. Pollen to unshare his screen so that I may do so.
Bruce Kamelos, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and uh, good evening, council members. I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Bruce Kamelos. I'm the general manager of the Elk Grove Water District. I'd like to thank the city council and city staff tonight for considering the needs of uh the Elk Grove Water District in this item. Like all agencies that perform construction, our district has experienced increased cost. Related to construction due to supply chain issues caused from the pandemic. So. Certainly, if these A R P A funds as presented by staff are approved by council. Our district will put the funds to good use replacing old water mains in Old Town. The Old Town Water Main Projects are important to the businesses and residents of Old Town as it will bring the water mains up to current standards. Providing more reliable service and improve fire protection. And I assure you, our district will manage the funds effectively and provide all project reporting to meet the city's requirements. For these funds. Thank you again, and I'm proud that our district's excellent partnership with the city.
Thank you so much. Next caller.
And I see any additional raised hand features being used in the Zoom environment. That'll conclude public comment for item nine point two.
All right, I'll go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and open it up for questions and comments before we take action. Uh, we can start with um council member when?
No comments. I'm good. Thank you. I'm glad, Mr. Kamelos, we were able to figure something out. I remember you coming and talking to us about this. So. Um, probably not as. Much as you had. Probably not as much as you had originally. I I can't recall. It was in the millions that you asked for. I'm so. Glad that we're able to find something to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember speeds.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm sorry, I I have no questions or concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember him.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, first of all, I want to echo the comments from uh council member when relative to being able to um. Spread this over to uh the the water district that is a special district was unavailable to receive ARPA funding and I'm I'm happy to hear that the. Uh, Kasuma C S D was able to get money directly from the state and therefore free up that money to to stay with the city. Um, and I'll come back to that in just a second. But uh, first of all, the the line item for uh business broadband um expansion. And if this is a question for Daryl, I don't know, or Matt, maybe you might not know. Uh, is that relative to uh expanding our fiber network? Uh, within the city?
That that is my understanding. Daryl may maybe be able to to add on some more of that, but that's my understanding, yes.
Okay. Uh, I think that's highly critical. Um, you know, as we look at uh some of the technology companies especially. Uh, but you know, a a lot of the companies in the South Bay, uh, when they try to find a, you know, a a new place to land that provides their employees. Um, higher quality of life, being able to have that, uh, you know, uh, the bandwidth capability. Is uh critical and I know that uh it's it's kind of the Wild West out there right now with uh particularly the the, you know, last. Connection from the trunk line or whatever it's called uh to the building and uh it really uh increases the. Leasable value of uh the square footage of those buildings. So that's great. And then my my second question is relative to the flexibility that's built into um. Offsetting uh city uh COVID revenue loss. Um, you mentioned that that the the expenditure should have to take place by twenty twenty four and twenty twenty six.
Correct.
And how do we quantify um expenditures related to? Uh, what essentially is a false negative, that what money that we didn't receive?
So the the final rule outlines similar to when we we proposed this back in uh back in July. That there's a a revenue loss uh allowance. So uh with the interim rule, there are revenue loss calculators that we use. To to calculate a presumed revenue loss. And I think at the time it was, boy, I think it was north of twenty five million that the calculator came up with. The final rule does allow a flat ten million dollar revenue loss allowance that we're recommending that we take. You don't have to use any of the. Calculators that G F O A or the League of Cities um stood up. So. It's just a much easier, much cleaner way for us to go. And that's why we're recommending uh ta- taking that course action.
So it's just a flat amount uh based on an assumption and and there doesn't have to be backup documentation behind it?
It does not. And that's part of the additional flexibility that treasury has allowed recipients.
Okay. How about that? Thank you.
You're welcome.
We are on Vice Mayor soon.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, uh, Mr. Pollen, thank you for that presentation. I support this expenditure plan. I also want to uh appreciate that we're able to do something for our for our partners, uh, Elk Grove Water Works and and C S D. So look forward to implementing those projects. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for the uh the presentation. So this is not a something, you know, you need to answer for tonight, but I would I would like. A report over the next several months as it relates to um the flexible homeless solutions. What what exactly that looks like? What is being spent? What are what impact is it having? Um, so that we can better assess whether we're doing enough. And what else, you know, as as we examine this, because um I know that we have allocations for our homeless. Um, solutions, but again, over time, I want, I really would like to see what we're doing. I know that project room keys there and. Hotel vouchers and some of these other initiatives. Uh, but I would love to see, again, I I I don't expect you to have the answer tonight. But um, something to share back with staff or even as a future follow up. Um, and we can even incorporate that perhaps in um the city manager's uh report at a future meeting as well. Just to get an update on how specifically we're spending this money, what that impact looks like. Um, so that we as a council can determine whether there needs to be any adjustments on that. Or advocate to the county, to the state for more funding. Um, as it relates to homelessness. But thank you again for that uh presentation. And with that, I will look for a motion.
Motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have a motion in a second.
I will commence the roll call vote for the resolution of item nine point two, starting with council member when.
I.
Councilmember speeds.
Hi.
Councilmember him.
Hi.
Vice Mayor soon.
Hi.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Hi.
The resolution of item nine point two will pass five oh.
Eric, if I could add something really quick, just as a follow up to that, just as a um, so the councils aware, the communities aware as a measure of accountability and and transparency. We've added a what a page to our website that's going to track the expenditures associated with these ARPA funds. So members of the public can go on on a monthly basis and see how the funds are being spent. And then we'll provide reports back um through those channels that also. Can provide specific uh report back to the council of various uh milestones as well as we continue to spend those funds. So.
All right, perfect. Excellent. Thank you. All right. So we have already covered nine point three. So that leads us to nine point four. Mr. Down. Oh, it's Ann. Okay. Hi. The floor is yours.
Good evening, um, Madam Mayor and uh Vice Mayor, City Council. This is Anne Grava, your uh contract real estate manager. With the um for the city. Um, I'm here tonight to talk about the item nine point four, the Jacoby Elk Grove Ranch Acquisition. And I just want to make sure I get into the correct mode here. Just a moment. I believe you can see my screen, correct?
Indeed, we have audio, we have visual. Please proceed.
Great. Well, thank you very much. Um, the item before you this evening, the recommended um recommended action is to adopt a resolution. The first approving and ratifying the real property. Purchase agreement and joint escrow instructions with Jacoby Elk Grove Ranch LLC for the purchase of a. Approximate one hundred acre parcel of land located at the northwest intersection of Camera Road and Lots Parkway. A an approximate point eight acre parcel of land located at eight six six three Camera Road. And an approximate point one six acre parcel of land located at eight six six five Camera Road. Secondly, authorizing the city manager to take all actions necessary and to execute all documents necessary to affect the purchase of the subject properties. Third, finding the acquisition of the subject parcels exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and finding the acquisition consistent with the Elk Grove General Plan. And finally, amending the fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty two annual budget. By increasing the amount budgeted for the Economic Development Incentive Fund expenditures by the amount of nine million five hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. Which includes nine million twenty five thousand for the purchase of the subject parcels. And five hundred thousand for the costs associated with evaluating the subject parcels for purchase and future development opportunities and closing costs. A bit of background on the um Jacoby parcel. The parcel is highlighted in yellow on the photo. And it is um three contiguous parcels um equalling about a hundred and one acres. This uh act, the parcel is proposed for the relocation of the zoo. Um, however, it is suitable for other. Um, commercial uses. The parcel is located within the Southeast Policy Area Special Planning Area. And within the ca- uh Camera Road Urban Design Study also. Um, as the search for the parcel, we looked at several parcels within the city, mostly in the southern portion of the city. And staff identified the Jacoby parcel as a as the parcel that was most advantageous. Mix of land zoning, availability, price, and a willing seller. So back in August of twenty twenty one, the city discussed with the owner about a possible acquisition of the property. And at that time, Mr. Jacoby advised um the city that Camilla's companies had an option on the property. Which um had expired. However, escrow had been opened and the parties were pursuing a closing um of the transaction. Um, negotiations took place directly with Mr. Camillus with regards to entering into an option agreement. Because the city did identify the Jacoby parcel as a prime location for the zoo relocation. And in September of twenty twenty one, city council approved an option agreement with Camilla's if he acquired the property. For approximately sixty sixty acres of land. The negotiated op- option price was between a hundred and ten thousand to a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars per acre. And that was dependent on when the city would close title or close escrow on the property after Camilla's had had acquired the property. Um, since this, you know, ongoing process of the zoo and the zoo study. Uh, the due diligence, um, the feasibility study, um, the city determined that it would likely need more than sixty acres on the Jacobity. Jacoby parcel in order to relocate the zoo. Um, so additional discussions have taken place with Mr. Jacoby. And with Mr. Camillus and Mr. Camillus and Mr. Jacoby both agreed to go ahead and sell the par- parcel directly to the city. Versus uh Mr. Camillus acquiring the parcel first and then selling a portion of the land to the city. Mr. Camillus has withdrawn his purchase offer offer um from Mr. Jacoby. And 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 Mr. Jacoby has entered into a purchase agreement with the city. The terms of that, the key terms of the purchase agreement um are that the negotiated first purchase price is nine million twenty five thousand dollars. Or approximately eighty nine thousand three hundred and ninety dollars per acre. And I do want to point out that the city did acquire an appraisal on the Jacoby parcel back in July of two thousand nineteen. Um, for the Camera Road project. And at that time, the appraiser concluded a value of eighty five thousand dollars an acre for the parcel. Or an equivalent value of eight point five million dollars for the parcel. Um, so with the. Uh, appraisal being in two thousand nineteen to twenty twenty two now. It is a reasonable increase in value and we do consider this um uh concluded value as being within the market. Um, for the acquisition of the full parcel. The purchase agreement requires a deposit of a hundred thousand dollars, which will be applied to the purchase price at the close of escrow. The hundred thousand dollars will be nonrefundable after the city's due diligence period is completed. The due diligence period for the project or for the acquisition is March eleventh, twenty twenty two. So that money goes nonrefundable on March twelve. The close of escrow is planned for April eighth, twenty twenty two. And the sale is as is where is with no sur- surviving seller warranties. Um, it is a short due diligence period. However, the city started um the studies. Uh, prior to entering in the purchase agreement. So we'll, we are well within our due due diligence and everything is looking great on the property. Um, the purchase of the property is consistent with the general plan as it would present an opportunity to to develop the property. To further the general plan goals of building a strong, diverse and balanced local economy. That supports existing and prospective businesses from large to small and attendant job growth, revenue generation and capital investment. So our recommendation this evening is to adopt the res- resolution as presented. Um, the environmental review for this, the current action is not a project under CEQA, so the project. For, so the acquisition is exempt under CEQA. And fiscally, funds to complete the purchase are currently available in the city's Economic Development Fund, Fund one oh five. But have not been budgeted for this purpose. A portion of the um, fund balance. Is from the recent sale of the forty four acres to Kubota in the southeast industrial. Storal annexation area in the amount of five point one three million. And the budget amendment is necessary to allocate the funds for the proposed acquisition and provide additional funds for the due diligence and project evaluation cost. And that concludes my presentation. Um, and I'd like to, uh, happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you for your presentation. At this time, I will open up the public comment opportunity.
For our attendees in the Zoom environment, this would be the opportunity to provide public comment on item nine point four. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council Members, there were no written comments that were submitted prior to the meeting in relation to item nine point four. As I take my attention over to the Zoom participants, I do see a hand raised. And so I would just ask, perfect, staff read my mind. I will pull up the speaker timer now.
Matthew Bondo, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Yes, hello, everybody. Uh, thank you for hearing my voice tonight. Um. I just have a few words to say. As the city council takes into consideration the purchase of this land. I ask that we please keep in mind. That the look, that local projects matter and the reinvestment back into our community matters. Um. I find that the city is in a position to where it can make some special requests of uh, from the developers. And in this, I have a few important questions. Along with the purchase of this land, will there be a commitment from the developer to require their contractors to utilize local hire? Will there be commitment from the developer to require their general contractors to provide healthcare and benefits for their workers? And three, will there be a commitment from the developer to require their contractors to pay Bay Area standard wages? Which ultimately allows the workers to give back to, into their community. And is seen as a livable wage. You know, based upon the past, it's really important for us to acknowledge that. When we don't have commitments from our developers and our contractors. Um. And we don't have requirements from them, unfortunately, um. It, things tend to fall heavily on the workers and um. I just want to make sure that, that we are being considered. Uh, in this time because we are watching this project and we are wanting to uh. Make sure that um, we are considered in your, your decision. So thank you for your time and I'm complete for now.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comments. Are there any other callers?
And I do not see the raised hand feature being utilized. In the Zoom environment, that'll conclude public comment for item nine point four.
All right, I'll close the public comment opportunity and open it up for any questions or comments for staff. Uh, Council Member speeds, any questions or comments?
Uh, no, but I do have barking dogs. So if you hear a barking dog, um. Uh, thank you, Ms. Grava. I appreciate it. Um, very good presentation. I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Council member him.
Good.
Council member when?
No questions. I'm good. Thank you.
Vice Mayor soon.
No, no questions. And great job getting uh, this done. And I loved your background.
It's women's construction.
Women in construction. We, that's right. It's, it's apropos. Thank you.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
I also do not have any questions. Uh, thank you for your presentation and thank you to the caller for their comments. Uh, with that, I'll look for a motion.
I'll move staff's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion in a second.
That roll call vote for the resolution of item nine point four will commence with Council Member when.
Aye.
Council Member speeds.
Aye.
Council Member here.
Aye.
Vice Mayor soon.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
The resolution of item nine point four will pass five oh.
All right, we are on to our next item. Nine point five. Mr. Diller.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council, uh, Shane Diller, Assistant Director of Development Services. Uh, this evening I have a report for you uh, in a brief power, PowerPoint presentation. To uh, brief the council on the actions staff has taken during the period of time we've imposed a moratorium on the. Sale of tobacco pro- or the sale or the issuance of new tobacco retail licenses. And the issuance of new permits. For smoking lounges and smoking lounges and smoke shops. Going to share my screen here. Momentarily. Should be live. So as you, as you recall, the city regulates the sale of tobacco products uh, through tobacco retail licenses. Uh, through the permitting of smoke shops and smoking lounges that were opened uh, prior after the year two thousand eleven. And enforcing state and local laws regulating the sale of tobacco products. Uh, currently, the city has fifty seven tobacco retail licenses issued. And this report's going to cover the staff work and analysis that we performed during that moratorium period. Uh, when we've been prohibiting the issuance of those licenses and the uh, issuance of the permits. Do recall that in March uh, twenty twenty, the council imposed a moratorium and staff provider that provided staff time to study potential code amendments. Related to the flavored tobacco products and vape products. Uh, between July of twenty twenty and January of twenty twenty one. Uh, the council was presented and considered a number of municipal code amendments. Uh, none of those amendments were adopted. And in February of twenty twenty one, the city council extended the moratorium. Until March twelfth, twenty twenty two. That's the longest period of time it can be extended under state law and it will expire on that date. During the moratorium period, uh, staff reviewed our code standards and our processes related to tobacco retail licensing and permitting processes. Uh, we engaged stakeholders uh, about those code amendments and what they might do both on the uh. Uh, anti-smoking or anti-tobacco retailing side and on the uh, tobacco, tobacco retailers, your shop owners, uh, your local business folks. Uh, in addition to that, we reviewed and enhanced our enforcement practices. We committed to the council to make sure that the tools we did have in place were being used and effective. And so the Elk Grove Police Department took the lead under a grant they have and partnered with code enforcement. And uh, performed fifty two inspections of our tobacco retailers over the period since the uh, since July of. Uh, twenty twenty. Most of those occurred last summer. And of those sixteen notices for regulation violations were issued, those were. The sorts of violations that were like improper signage, were improper display or inadequate display of materials. Uh, there were no license suspensions or revocations needed during that period as all of the violations were corrected upon notice. And the police department did issue two criminal citations to employees of tobacco retailers. For selling tobaccos to minors during dequing operations. There is ban and continues to be movement at the state and federal level in regards to the regulation of tobacco, specifically tobacco flavored products. Uh, you'll remember SB seven ninety three was passed and signed by the governor and then a uh, a proposition or a uh. Uh, referendum was declared and enough signatures were gathered and that's. Uh. Senate bill will go to the voters in the November twenty twenty two ballot. The uh. The legislature is currently considering an additional bill. It's AB sixteen ninety and that bill is currently in its first house in the assembly. And it would prohibit the sale of any product with a single use filter, which. Is most cigarette products uh, as they're sold and, and the uh, various vape products that would qualify as well. That bill, if passed, would empower local agencies to enforce these top, these prohibitions through a civil fine process. At the federal level, there have been regulations rolled out in both twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. Uh, that prohibit uh, various types of vape products. Flavored vape products, they require uh, those vape products uh, that are going to be on the market to receive a special FDA approval. And there is uh, regulation being developed now after uh, order of the Biden administration to prohibit menthol products. Uh, those regulations are all still uh, being implemented and administered. And it's not something that we at the local level would be involved in at this point. There are other regional efforts underway as well. As you'll recall, this discussion began after the city of Sacramento imposed their flavor product ban in twenty nineteen. And recently in January of twenty twenty one, Sacramento County adopted a flavor product ban that exempted hookah products. And that is set to uh, take effect later this year in twenty twenty two. They delayed the enforcement of that ban in order to provide the businesses an opportunity to sell off their current supply. With that, I'll, I'll pause and I'll take questions. Uh, again, if anybody. Uh, has questions of where we've been and glad to get into the detail there or of where we might go. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Diller. Um, before we go to any council comments, I'd like to open up the public comment opportunity.
So for our members in the Zoom attendee audience, now would be the opportunity to use the raised hand feature to comment on item nine point five. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council Members, there were no written comments submitted prior to the meeting in relation to item nine point five. As I take my attention back to our list of attendees, I do not see the raised hand function being utilized. That is going to conclude public comment on item nine point five.
All right, I'll close the public comment opportunity. Any um, comments or questions for Mr. Diller? Um, this is just a presentation, so no action will be taken. Uh, we can, I'll just. Start here, uh, Council Member Hume, any questions, comments?
No comments. Thank you for the presentation, Shane.
Thank you. Council Member speeds.
No comments or questions. Thank you very much, Mr. Diller.
Council Member when?
No questions. Thank you, Mr. Diller, for the presentation. I know um, we had talked about this. Back then and it came by so quick. I saw this on the agenda and I thought, oh my God, already it's already on the agenda. Now there's been some. Changes in legislation and whatnot. And so I appreciate you um, keeping us up to date on all of the new changes that are happening. So thank you very much.
Vice Mayor soon.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I want to echo Council Member Wynn's comments, but also I want to add on, um, Shane. Uh, really want to commend you and your team for your enforcement actions, you know, um, seeing. The, the, just the, the corrections in the signage and I'm glad to hear there's only two. Uh, incidents of sun and miners, you know, but that's two that would have happened if, if your team wasn't on it. So. Uh, commend you and your team for making sure that um, things are um, are, are, we're upholding our own policies. Thanks.
Thank you. And I, yes, I echo the same comments from Vice Mayor soon. Um, and just holding the violators accountable and seeing the good work there. Um, thank you for that. Did I hear somebody trying to chime in? No. All right. All right. Thank you for your presentation. All right. We will go on to our next item. Mr. Lindgren.
And our final regular item for the night is item nine point six, which is to consider policies for monitoring a return to in-person public meetings in the chamber. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council Members, I am Jason Lindgren, your city clerk for tonight. I do not have a formal PowerPoint pres- presentation. This is a discussion that we've had at various points um, over the last half year of how to get back into the chamber. Um, and what the most recent development was, was from Sacramento County Public Health. In which they issued orders that rescinded prior orders. So at the top of the year in twenty twenty two, there was an order rescinding any kind of public meetings and um, to use teleconference environments. That was rescinded. And also, there was the order back from July of twenty twenty one. Which required no matter what your vaccination status was, if you're in a public indoor meeting space, you would be wearing a mask covering. And that was also rescinded. So where we sit is that the Sacramento County Public Health orders have been rescinded. The California Department of Health has an order that stands for the state of California, which is for unvaccinated individuals. They are um, to wear masks if they find themselves in indoor environments. Um, but the masks are um. Kind of a um, self-monitored situation at this point. Where does that put our discussion for meetings in the chamber? From what staff had proposed from the discussions back in July and September of twenty twenty one was a hybrid model. And the purpose of the hybrid model was for us to bridge this gap between the meetings that we've been having in the teleconference environment. But also recognizing that at the time that we were talking about a hybrid model, it was also quite possible that members of our council would be teleconferencing as well. And so as we move forward into twenty twenty two and the nuances of the pandemic and what it may or may not do in the future. As we look forward, we are still recommending the hybrid model. What we see from the staff perspective is it'll help kind of bridge this process as we come back from teleconference to being in person. Because I think there'll still just be some reticence from our members of the public to be back in these public spaces. But part of that is uh, giving folks the uh, encouragement to come back, uh, but also to see how the process goes. Um, in terms of how the process goes, staff will still continue to return with consent items that request the ability to do teleconferencing. Those consent items have always given us the ability to tell a conference. They haven't quite required it. We've usually been under requirements of other health orders or things like that to not be able to meet in person and to have to use teleconferencing. The reason staff will continue to bring those back is we just do not know what the future holds uh, as we have. Never known what um, COVID is going to be up to. It's been a wily adversary as we've battled through. Um. And what that does is it, it's just an action to give us the flexibility to come back. If staff, as we project out, um, to be able to provide, heading back into the chamber and having a meeting as current um, conditions stand, we're not seeing any trends going in the wrong directions at this point. And we'd be targeting going back into the chamber in the hybrid model by the meeting of March ninth of twenty twenty two. Um, you know, when it comes down to the elements of what the environment would look like, part of the benefit of our chambers, it is a large spacious place. And I don't believe that um, the city would be at a point, the, you know, the health orders that are out there. Um, from California Department of Health, it's a self-monitoring process that folks are doing. And so we're not going to be doing any kind of verification or status of anyone. We're going to be, if we're headed towards opening the doors to City Hall, we'd like to invite folks in and to participate. The element that gets to a little bit of um, new territory for us will be providing those hybrid models, but a lot of that, it's driven through our AV equipment that will be inside of the uh, chamber. One element that would help enhance that hybrid environment is if members that are participating have personal electronic devices, because what it does is it gives that projection for folks. Um, it, and that's something we'll be testing anyways when we're in there to make sure we're getting uh, feedback that's causing any kind of problems with the recordings. But with that, we're on this cusp of being able to have this discussion about uh, a return to in-person public meetings. Um. And again, all these requirements of hybrid meetings, um, not a requirement for us to do these moving forward. It's uh, more seen as an option if we anticipate seeing members of the council in a teleconference environment. We want to be flexible in order to bring them in to that teleconference environment. And another element of consideration is that for our members of the public that might be reticent to be coming back into these public spaces, we're giving them an avenue. Um, it is not projected that this is a system. Um, of the hybrid element of providing callers to come in remote, of something that would um, be sustained. It would be a process for us to get back to business as usual, as we've known it here at the city. Um, and uh, I think that concludes all of my points and uh, I think my last point, sorry, is that when we talk about the resolution that allows us to do teleconferencing, so that one that will return. Uh, on our consent calendar, it has two elements, which is the sustaining the uh, the order of the state of emergency in the state of California, but also that there's a public health concern. Those are the two kind of tandem points. And if we see those disappear, so for instance, masking for all individuals were to disappear. And no other conditions are being set from a health order perspective, that would dissolve this ability for us to hold a teleconference environment meeting. So that has kind of a cusp that's going to come to it. Um, other than that, I'm open to questions. And then if we have any members of the public that have comments for item nine point six.
All right, before we get to any questions, I'll open it up for a public comment opportunity.
So for our uh, attendees in the Zoom environment, this would be the opportunity to use the raised hand feature that's inside of Zoom in order to cue yourself in order to speak on item nine point six. And Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council Members, there were no uh, prior written comments that were in relation to item nine point six. As I take my attention over to our listing of attend. As I take my attention over to our listing of attendees that do not see the raised hand function being utilized, and that'll conclude public comment for item nine point six.
All right, I'll close the public comment opportunity. And I mean, I'm not shy about this. I've been eagerly awaiting to resume in-person meetings. It's a long time coming. So with your hybrid that you're describing here, you're prepared to have this hybrid model for the essentially the next meeting? Based on prior action that we took.
Yeah, and it'll be interesting because we'll have some opportunities to test out some of this capacity just in the workshops that'll be going on for redistricting. But we have a couple of opportunities under our belt for staff, and we did test it out actually back in July. We were ready. We were poised to go back in July of 2021 to give it a try. I think what I just asked for is a little bit of patience as we go through, if we do find ourselves in the chamber and we're dealing with some of the electronica fun that goes on with all this kind of running the dual processes. But staff, we feel like we've got a pretty solid system in order to. It basically takes the Zoom callers and channelizes them through the podium computer, which, once you're in the chamber, that's being broadcast out in all of the audio in the chamber. And we won't necessarily have the screens active, but it'll give you that sense of the speaker timer and all that kind of stuff. So it's really driven through through our AV systems, and it's quite clever. So our IT folks get a gold star.
And what is your anticipated timeline for this hybrid scenario? Are you thinking, you know, try try the hybrid for one, two, three months before it goes back to business as usual? Or do you see this a little bit more indefinite?
I think I would sweat it out the first night on March ninth and see how it goes. And then even be ready as quick to just touch base either at the second meeting in March or into April and just see how it's going. Because part of it is that there's always an element when we're testing out kind of these systems, whether the technology holds, sometimes we get feedback issues that just it doesn't make it feasible for us to proceed forward if it's making it detrimental or difficult for us to use other features within the chamber. And the other, I mean, from the staff perspective, a hybrid model is not intended to be an indefinite process. It's one that we are seeing is going to have a tail end, and whether it's a month or whether it's two months. What's fascinating is we're now poised to jump right back into this. If we run into some kind of similar situation, it really just adds to our tool belt of being able to to continue the business of people.
Very good. Let me open it up for council comments here from my colleagues. I see Councilmember Wen's turn her camera off, so please proceed.
Thank you. Questions? So will we not be asking, you said they would be self-attesting if they're vaccinated or not, those that are coming in, right? So we're not going to be asking them to show proof of vaccination if they decide to come in without.
Apparently, from, yeah, the staff perspective is we do not anticipate doing any kind of check-in screening or verifying of vaccination cards. It is a process where we are leaning on what the direction's coming from state health, which is that people are going to be self-monitoring these conditions. So that if they need a mask and they're unvaccinated, if they're unvaccinated, they should be wearing a mask when they're indoors. But we're not going to be asking anybody in that regard.
And then, and since we're doing this hybrid model, and I just feel like everybody's going to get it sooner or later. If if one of us should get it, would there still be an opportunity for us to participate via Zoom or no?
What we, so actually, it's kind of interesting. The the most difficult element is probably keeping the continuity on the council, if the council's actually a hybrid. So if we have folks that are in the teleconference environment, folks that are in person in the chamber, but that's part of the process that we've been working through as staff is that this opportunity for teleconferencing, it's remote for either our callers that are calling in from the public, but it's also going to be available to our council members. What becomes the question mark is how long are we allowed to do teleconferencing at this level that we have? Because we act under the the conditions, those two conditions of the state of emergency in some form of a threat to public health is what allows us to continue to teleconference at these eased restrictions. So when you talk about the Brown Act stepping back in, if we don't have those two conditions, it really becomes difficult to conduct teleconference meetings because of the noticing requirements, opening the location where the individual's teleconferencing from. And all of those defeat the purpose of what why we're in an environment that we're teleconferencing in the first place, which is a concern about the pandemic, right? You're not going to teleconference just to open up your home to have people come in. I think that's why we have these relaxed regulations at this time. But it's to keep those in mind that if those start, those elements start to fade away, we lose this ability to teleconference, but we still have that now. And it's why staff will continue to bring back that consent item resolution to ask for the ability to teleconference, both for keeping that capacity open as we kind of make this next transition in the COVID story, but as well to be flexible if we need to pivot in whichever direction we're told to by this. By this pandemic.
I mean, I'll just put it out there that I know for what I do with my agency is that if you're fully vaccinated and you'd like to come in and receive services and you don't want to wear your mask, you have to show proof of vaccination. And so my only concern is that nobody is going to wear their mask and there is nobody checking to see if they are vaccinated or not. And we are a city that had the highest number of cases, right, of positive cases. And so I know a little bit of a concern there, and I just want to voice the concern, but happy to come back and see everybody as well, too.
Yeah, we had one zip code that had the high number of cases, but we also have the highest in the county for vaccination. So it's sort of, you know, can be a little bit confusing how that will sort of coincides. Councilmember, let's see, Hume, any comments, questions, feedback?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I know how much the Vice Mayor is really chomping at the bit to get back to being in person. As much as I enjoy being remote, no, I look, I have said for a long time now that I I long for the day of getting back to being in person, and I appreciate the concerns raised by Councilmember Wen. And as one who just recently experienced COVID, I am now vaccinated, boosted, and have natural immunity. So bring on the maskless throngs of attendees as far as I'm concerned. But no, not to make light of it. I just, I I would hope that as we look at the governor shift, the rhetoric towards kind of facing this situation in the endemic phase and realizing we've got to learn how to live with that. And a lot of that, as I've always maintained, comes back to personal responsibility, personal comfort levels, and and going about your life in a way that, you know, you're you're being a good human being in the larger community. So I look forward to seeing Darren's shiny smile in council chambers.
That's great. That's great. Well, Vice Mayor, since you're already on the camera.
Well, for the record, I'm just trying to be responsive to my dog. He drives out with me home, working from home and, you know, but no, in all seriousness, yeah. The I think it's becoming obvious that we will be learning to live with this in more of an endemic fashion as as we've started to hear in the in the media. And and so, yeah, I am looking forward to seeing everybody again. You know, as we joke, I mean, the just the convenience, obviously, of being able to attend these, whether it's these meetings or any meetings for for work or that matter. I think we all recognize the benefits of of technology. But it'll it will be good to to be able to see each other and be sitting next to each other again going forward. So look forward to seeing you all soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Spees.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I, of course, I support the consent item to continue to come. I fully support going back into council chambers. I do want to push the limit a bit here related to the hybrid model. Frankly, I think we need to just get back all in. I frankly, I think that's the best way to go. If folks are, and there are folks who do have concerns about their about their immunity, and I completely understand that. We do have additional avenues for them. They can email, they can leave a message, they can, you know, call, text, whichever. My point being is I don't see there being a need for an immediate step. I understand, certainly understand the sensitivity. I do. But I think that it best serves the public without doing the hybrid step. Let's just go back in.
To Councilmember Spees' point, I would agree. I think, you know, it's time. Congressmember Bera, Ami Bera, had a wonderful op-ed last week. If I don't know if any of you had a chance to read it, but it basically, as as a Democrat, as not only as a Democratic Congress member, but most importantly, as a doctor, he shared his opinions about, you know, moving towards an endemic and being safe and being responsible, but getting back to business. Not only for our small businesses that are suffering, but our students that have been suffering and so many, so many others. So I appreciate, you know, getting back to that sort of business as usual as much as we can and learning that we're going to have to coexist with with COVID and whatever iterations come. It's been two years.
I mean, let's let's be clear, and I'm sorry, I shouldn't have interrupted you, but to your point, I mean, let's be clear. Folks should be vaccinating themselves.
Yes.
And if folks are not feeling well, they should not be there.
Yes.
And if they, and if they have sensitivities, they should be wearing a mask.
Absolutely. Absolutely, without a doubt. Be safe, be responsible, use common sense here. If you're sick, you should not be going anywhere, you know, keep keep those, keep those cooties at home or to yourself. But to the point, I know, Mr. Lindgren, you mentioned sort of a hybrid model is what you're prepared for. What's, you know, if there's consensus, can we just go back as with the adequate disclaimers? Sometimes you got to put those disclaimers. If you're sick, stay home. If you're not vaccinated and all of these things, as those friendly reminders, because that is, you know, it's not going to necessarily stop you from getting COVID because we've seen with Omicron, whether you were vaccinated or boosted, you still, a lot of people got it. But it also kept them away from hospitals and dying and being on respirators. Or is that or is that just too quick to jump in? I don't want to get out of out of step with what staff is ready to implement. But I know, I mean, I do share Councilmember Spees' sentiments to to move forward as quickly as possible.
Well, and I won't cut around it. The hybrid model will be a new adventure. We will have to test it out. We'll have to see how it works. And so if the direction was to return back into the chamber as before, without all of the the trappings of a hybrid model or teleconferencing, teleworking, we can take that direction. That's and that's a much more familiar territory for everything that we do. Where the concerns come up is that the, when we're talking about making a step and saying we are not going to do teleconferencing, that means no teleconferencing for our legislative bodies. So for our council, for considering all of our other committees and commissions, that we would be saying there are, there is no more teleconferencing. And once we're at the point where we're not broadcasting our agenda that we're teleconferencing, we're saying, folks, this is the location. This is where you need to go. If there is any kind of condition that puts us back into the place of, here we are, we're back into a concerns of of spread that the, we do not have the ability of a place to pivot at that point. It's, we're going to be at the point where it's, okay, we need to convene the meeting and then adjourn it to a date certain so that we can then set everything up and do all those things. So I think where the strength of the hybrid model comes in is, yes, it's another challenge. It is a process for us to to provide that. But what it is from the staff perspective is it's the way that we maintain that flexibility going into an unknown future. But if the direction is to go back into the chamber, we can, we can head in that direction as well.
I see our Vice Mayor's hand is raised.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I just wanted to add, I mean, first of all, every time we've tried to rush things, we ended up having to go backwards anyway because the 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 virus told us otherwise. So I I think, you know, being measured in in how we come back, I think, is prudent, number one. Number two, you know, as as much as I I agree with with both, both of you, Mayor and Councilmember Spees, about, you know, being taking proper precautions for ourselves, masking if we're not feeling well, et cetera. But, you know, look, some of us, I mean, including myself, we're around elderly, our parents, our parents aren't well. And so there are some some precautions that some people, I mean, frankly, including myself, we need to take that. So I I don't just try to think about, you know, if it were just me, yeah, I can, you know, I can throw caution to the wind, but I also need to recognize where any of us at any given time, not knowing where we're transmitting things, we need to be cognizant of who we're going to be around too. So I just want to put that perspective out there and not not minimizing what both of you had said, but I just want to add that perspective.
Fair, fair points that you raised, and and I understand that. Councilmember Spees.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna push here a little bit because I think that most of us have been noticed in public a time or two not wearing a mask, right? So I guess what I'm asking is, do we go to the grocery store? Do we go, do we go to a restaurant, right? I I mean, I guess what I'm saying is that, again, I fully appreciate and I completely understand the sensitivities that people have relative to their immunity and for adult or for for elderly adults, right? I totally get that. But but we have to be consistent, and I think the way forward, the way to be consistent is to be all in. Because if we're not going to be all in, then I think we have some concerns about how we display ourselves in public elsewhere.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying for just us personally, I'm talking about we're making, you know, policy for for everybody is all I'm saying. And so we just need to consider that as well. I'm not speaking about necessarily. Again, we might be willing and able to be a little bit, you know, less cautious, but we have to worry about everybody who may not have that same luxury. And people that we come into contact with, you know, may not be able to withstand something that, something that we are, we unknowingly pass on, and that's, that's all I'm saying.
So, Mr. Lindgren, what bodies are meeting in person? I know the legislature, they're they're meeting.
Well, the federal government, many of the federal government are not. They're teleworking. If you go back to DC right now, you'll find most of all the federal agencies not there.
And I do not know, I'm, I don't have those data points, so.
I I think so what's being proposed is we're back in person, but there is the opportunity for the public to participate and call in virtually, right? It's not for, the the virtual effect is is for us if, you know, maybe one of us becomes positive or enough, but the idea, what I've read and what I'm hearing is that the proposed, what's on the agenda or what the item is, is that we're back in person. But there's a hybrid model for the community to be able to participate virtually, either come in person or virtually. Am I right or am I wrong?
It's a little more than that. That the, where the hybrid model is that it still permits this use of the the Zoom environment to channel in speakers that are from remote locations, but it also allows members of the council to teleconference in, so that you would still have a capacity as a member of the council. If you did not want to be inside the chamber, we would be able to bring you in via teleconference.
But for the most part, it sounds like we're all coming back, right? We're all coming back unless you catch COVID again, right? I mean, I've seen people catch COVID three times, Pat, so I don't know about your immunity that you talked about. So I mean, I think we're all coming back. I think it's really for the public so that they can participate. Because I agree, I mean, I feel like there are some folks that want to participate, but they can't come in. And I I agree, I hear you that they can email us and they can call, but being able to call in and voice their concerns and get their message across to us for now, I think is good, especially if it's something that we've already had set up. And then moving into that step when it's when it's time and it's and it's ready. But for all of us, I I think we're all coming back.
Councilmember Spees.
Okay, so so one, one last question, and after this, I'll shut my pie hole. But but what we have seen are instances where some people have chosen to abuse the process and taken a considerable amount of time at the expense of other. and taken a considerable amount of time at the expense of other residents in terms of being able to speak their three minutes. I'd hoped I kind of didn't have to push this one, because I'm sure I'll get some slack for this. Not from you guys, of course, but what I'm saying is, I can think of two series of, of issues where people have abused this opportunity and have taken way more time than they should have. And I believe that going back in person will eliminate that from happening. I'm certainly happy to hear from every single resident. I'm happy to hear emails. I'm not necessarily happy to hear about some expert from New York who has absolutely no business whatsoever in this community. And so that's why I'm a little fired up about it. I apologize to you, that I swear that's my last push. But please, let's just go back in person. That way, the people who need to speak get the time to do it in a timely fashion. Thank you. I appreciate you guys listening to.
Always, always. I'll chime in again in a minute. I'm gonna, let's go to Vice Mayor soon again.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Look, I, Councilmember Spees, I appreciate what you're saying. I guess I'm erring on the side of caution. I don't, I don't see a need to take away, oh, I'm not, let me take, let me rephrase. I understand what the risk that you just explained, and I guess I, I feel that the benefits of providing a flexible environment for now and a measured approach as we are coming out of things. One, because we, it's more difficult to go back again if we needed to. And so I would say that it would, it's, to me, it's a, it's a more prudent approach to allow for the flexibility for now.
The flexibility for the public.
For the public, yeah. For the hybrid, well, everything, I mean, the hybrid environment until we just, I mean, it's a measured approach. And I don't, I mean, we never talked about the length of that, but I think we'll know when we start going down it.
I do recall, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Well, yeah, I was just saying, I, I think that is, is better and it's, it's worth the risk of a caller from New York if that happens once in a while, you know? I don't, I don't know that that happens.
From Minnesota or Wisconsin?
Yeah, it still didn't happen. I mean, when is the last time those, those things?
Well, I mean, I think, if you recall from earlier presentations, the engagement was much more enhanced when it was in person. So we've actually, because of COVID, we have less engagement. If I, is that correct, Mr. Lindgren?
I thought it was more.
They get more attendance because.
I remember your presentation suggesting.
You know, we have not run the numbers about the grand social experiment of a pandemic and what it does to public participation. But I think it's an intriguing question. We'd have to look at kind of the numbers. We're an interesting phenomenon, right? Because there's one element that you can look at, how many people were in the Zoom environment? We should be able to pull that data up. But the next part is that we're also broadcasting, and so people can be watching us live, they can watch the recordings later. And typically, we see, I mean, when it came to the world of who tunes into their local government, as intriguing as my presentations are, the numbers are not the highest, right? The, and so the, I think it's more, I think it would be interesting to look just to see what the Zoom numbers are able to tell us, just if there's activity levels and things like that.
I'm curious about that, Jason, for a city, but I can tell you at the state level, as far as the Natural Resources Agency, when we've, we've taken like an anecdotal poll from, from folks, the different boards, you know, Parks Districts and Water Commission, Coastal Commission, you know, throughout the state of California, all the executive directors have, have, have opined that they get more attendance, you know, be online because of this, this environment. So at least from, you know, from a state level, you know, specific to the agency, that's the feedback that I've heard as I, when I've participated on those calls. So I'm curious what, what you would show, what you would see at the, at the city level, if it was the same or not.
Mr. Hume, you've been quiet.
Position hasn't changed. In person.
No, I agree. In person is there, what, but what are your, your thoughts on hybrid, to hybrid or not to hybrid as it relates to public engagement?
So here, here's the thing, I appreciate Jason Lindgren's point about if we don't leave open that option, should the landscape change again, then it becomes more unwieldy to return back to a virtual environment. And I appreciate Councilmember Spees' point. However, that person from New York could be in town visiting a relative and still come out to the city council meeting, and it's actually illegal to ask them for their address or place of residence. They're, they're allowed to address or any government. So I get it, there has been abuses and you know, I certainly prefer looking somebody in their eyes when they're speaking, but so I, I don't have a strong opinion, I guess, is the, the sort of way. To me, it's more important that the five of us are back together conducting business with staff in the room.
I would agree with that sentiment. For me, it's most important to be back as a council, as staff and, and conducting city business and making chambers available to the public. As it relates to noticing the public and transitioning, maybe it's, you know, it's going to take a little, maybe it's a couple of meetings at some point that is going to expire.
Of course, yeah.
And so, yeah, so that's going to happen on its own, whether it's in two meetings or four meetings. I think for me, most importantly, it is to come back in person and be patient, and that's the friendly word I will use of those that don't use public comments. Well.
So let me ask this question. City clerk, there's nothing to prevent us from moving back to normalcy by degrees. In other words, if we were to go to a hybrid environment and find out that it becomes completely unwieldy or, or, you know, some of Councilmember Spees' premonitions come true, there's nothing to say that we could then go to a full in-person-only environment at that point and just take that deep dive. Is that correct?
I think the hardest element is the balance of who's in attendance at the meeting. So if all five council members are in the meeting environment, everything else we're doing is an embellishment. What happens is, once one of the members is teleconferencing, we need to provide a teleconference avenue for the public to be able to participate. And those are under those new provisions of, of what we're being allowed to do under the Brown Act. So if you're literally talking, all five members are in the chamber, and we're trying to field some kind of unwieldy set of calls, that can just be a call where the, you can look to the clerk and say, you know what? We're going to turn this off, because it's not helping us conduct the business of this meeting that we're holding in person.
Well, I volunteer to drive over to the Vice Mayor's house, pick him up, make sure he comes down to council chambers.
Oh, no, you have COVID. Don't, don't come.
I'll wear a mask.
Councilmember Spees?
Well, so I said I was going to end it, but I'll, I'll put this, this is not a premonition. This has happened in two series recently, right? And the last thing is, I'm certainly going to approve this, if it goes to a vote, certainly going to approve to go back in. I'm not going to vote no, because I disagree with going back in in the hybrid model. So when I vote in support, please know that I'm telling you, we should be going back in full. But now my piece, I've said it. Thanks, everybody.
We are all coming back in person and staff, and so that's what I'm looking forward to most. And be patient here for the transitional period for maybe more thoughtful and adequate noticing and give the public an opportunity, sort of wean off of this two-year process, because it's been two years and you get accustomed to doing certain things. I mean, it's been very comfortable putting on Zoom, even though, with the exception of tonight's meeting, I've always been, been at City Hall. So I get it, and particularly with all of our boards and commissions, it makes it a lot easier to participate online than having to go in person, because, you know, we're not getting paid fancy salaries for joining these important meetings and helping our community in our region. So there is value. But as, as our own city leaders, you know, as we are, I'm excited that we would be coming back, and that is ultimately what you're suggesting based on a prior action that we've already taken. So this is just the hybrid as it relates to the public. And we can reassess that after a couple of meetings. Things go well and you know, because some, some higher heads need to say, okay, we're in endemic and here's a following order, then, then of course, so we'll make adjustments accordingly. But at least that's where it looks like it's heading and at least we give the public some time to transition back to new normalcy. I don't know, whatever it is. Whenever I say the new normal, some other variation becomes part of the new normal. So I guess let's just continue to be patient. But at least we'll all get to see each other and staff, and then welcome in the public and transition. Hopefully sooner rather than later.
I think we've advanced to nouveau normal at this point. We're, we're so far.
I like that.
Whatever's going on. I will put a shameless plug, which is, this same model will be available to our public to come on down to City Hall on February 28th and March 2nd for redistricting workshops. They're going to be a lot of fun. We got crans, we got all sorts of stuff, and folks can come down to get that, put your, put your toes in the pool and come on back to City Hall and have some fun. And then we'll all be warmed up for, for that meeting on March 9th. We will be coming back with a hybrid model in which we will have the capacity to field members of the council from a telework environment if needed, but it sounds as though everyone's geared up to come back in attendance, but we'll be channeling Zoom calls. And I think what we'll be able to see is just through the Zoom environment, we will get a tracking of how many people are inside the chamber and how much traffic we're getting online through Zoom. I mean, it's going to be one of the first immediate indicators about whether the system's being utilized or whether folks really want to come back and, and be able to see people in person, which I think is a very natural tendency, so.
I'm sorry, I have one more question. Are we going to limit the amount of people that comes in person, or we're just opening it up and fill it as much as we can need want?
We do have, our fire marshal will put a, a capacity on the room, but as far as the room layout, there are no distancing requirements. What we may look at is options to provide some seating. We'll, we'll look at what options there are. The other element is that for, in terms of just folks that want to still keep some social distancing ability, we do broadcast out and the meeting goes out into the foyer. And the foyer is typically a pretty spacious area with a lot of air circulation. And so we have a lot of options when we host folks at City Hall and we think that we, we should be able to help them out. And if it's a matter of where we kind of triage and bring them in to get to the podium, we can even get a mic out to folks. So, I mean, if the, the comfort level of our attendees, we'd like to get people comfortable being around people again, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I think we have a plan. Do you need anything else from us, Jason?
I don't think so. I think we're all speed forward. We'll have a hybrid model, we'll monitor as we go forward, and we'll dust off all the items over there to make sure. And keep your calendars open, February 28th and, and March 2nd, so.
All right, well, looking forward to our in-person, so thank you. With that, we'll move on to our next item, which is council comments, reports, and future agenda items. I'll start with Councilmember Winn.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Spees?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Councilmember Hume?
I wish I could be as succinct as my colleagues, but I cannot. Two things to report. First of all, at the last RT meeting, we voted to adopt a change in, or at least to ask Assemblymember to move forward legislation to provide for a change in the makeup of the RT board that would add another seat for county representation and also add another seat for Elk Grove representation. So starting next year, hopefully Elk Grove will be afforded two seats on the RT board. And the other thing, this morning, we had a sanitation district board meeting. And the most important thing to report out of that was a great report, quarterly update on the Harvest Water Project. Moving forward, it looks like the notice to proceed will commence starting in summer of 2023. And reclaimed water will be diverted down to use as an in-lu groundwater recharge by being, providing surface irrigation to crop farmers. And the, the change that that made in the diagram showing the elevation of the groundwater is significant. And just really excited about that project moving forward. That's all I have to report. And now there's just one thing that I'd like to bring up relative to, I don't even know if it's future agenda items, it may just amount to a little more than a rant, and that is that we had a homicide in Elk Grove recently committed by a homeless individual perpetrated upon a homeless individual. The victim was asleep in his sleeping bag at the bus shelter when this other person, and I use that term loosely, just started stabbing him. That is horrific in and of itself. What is more horrific is that when I saw this individual's mugshot, he looked familiar to me, so I did a little digging on the interweb. And he had previously been arrested for brandishing potentially the same knife that was used as the murder weapon on another individual in the same parking lot, charged with a felony of threats with a lethal weapon intending great bodily injury. Million-dollar bail. And yet he was back out on the streets in order to commit this crime. That, the, the victim's family lost a family member. Okay, let's start there. The other thing is, when you couple this with the tragedy that happened up in Rancho Cudova, where the young woman was out for a jog and was accosted, raped, and murdered by another individual that had no business being on our streets. And then the, the woman who was putting her kids in her car after visiting a park and is accosted and punched by a young homeless man for no reason. These things are unacceptable to me. We have lost control of our civilized society and we're shrugging our shoulders because of decisions by courts and legislators to not act. And it's time that that ends. And I think that we have an opportunity, potentially with this community prosecutor, potentially with enacting some local ordinances, that we take the opportunity. Now, I am not suggesting, do not mishear me, I am not suggesting that being unhoused is a crime. However, there are criminal instances taking place that can be used as an indicator or as an opportunity to compel intervention to say, you are not participating in society, you are not living your best life. We don't want to incarcerate you. Here are the services that are option, that are available in order for you to change the trajectory of your life. Should you refuse, then you will, then we will pursue the stick option. So there's a carrot, and then there's a stick. I, I know that I had, I was so just worked up over this, because I've been doing a lot of research on this issue. And so I had a virtual call earlier today with our police chiefs, with our homeless outreach team and with the city manager. And there is a lot that we are hamstrung because of legislative issues, because of court decisions. But there, there are things that we can do, and I know that Chief Davis is familiar with some, I think it's an ordinance that was adopted by Rancho Cudova. And again, all I'm trying to get to is the point where we can make contact with the individual and compel them that what, that, what is transpiring, that the situation that they're in is, it's not humane. There's nothing compassionate about it. And that, you know, unfortunately, it's, we like to paint this idealized version where, you know, it's, it's just a recently down-on-their-luck situation. And that the sad fact, and this is, is borne out by talking to first responders and to individuals who interface with this community, the majority, and not even slim, the majority are suffering from trauma. They're suffering from mental health, or they're suffering from substance and/or alcohol abuse. And if we are not addressing those root causes, we are not making an impact. I look at, at the situation just north of our border by Casumus River Boulevard. And it looks like a slum in a third world country. And this is in in America. It is. It's unacceptable. It's it's we have to start moving the needle on this. So again, I I'm afraid this isn't little more than just a rant, but I would like council agreement to bring back an item and I would leave it to 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 our chiefs and to the homeless outreach team to to put together what that looks like, but something that we at least try and do what we can at the local level until we can convince folks that what we've been doing isn't working.
So to your point, Councilmember Hume, you and I have had conversations about this a little bit. I would like to see you also be a part of those conversations. Maybe it's a it's a task force or or something so that we can be ahead of this. There are so many lessons learned just looking all around us, even looking within with this with this examples. And that's why I even brought up, you know, so we're getting funding for homelessness. What are we doing with it? How are we spending it? And I'm, you know, we're not going to fix all of these problems. But all of us, all of us are getting emails and they've been increasing. They have been increasing. And so I would say I would suggest taking it a step further and putting together a task force with you and the chief and whomever else and coming back to us your colleagues and saying, okay, this is what we know. This is the situation. This is how we can make a difference. This is and assess the needs and and until we can assess the needs, we won't be able to advocate. Whether it's increased funding from the county, from the state, from the federal government. We're starting to do the count. But we we have an opportunity and what I am proud to say is we have the lowest rate in the county of our unhomed population. But we need to do better. I had a great conversation with the food bank just last week with Marie Giacchino and Dr. Suman Singa as I toured the new facility. There's consensus. We can and should be doing more. So I ask you, will you with consensus put together a task force, a team? And really assess and help assess so that it's not just put up there for staff, but you also there as part of the conversation and then come back to us. I hear voices. I don't know who that's speaking background, but is that something you would be open to?
You know, Mayor, I I would, and we had discussed this previously and and I'm almost ashamed to admit that, you know, when it's an inconvenience or a disruption, it's easy to be complacent, but we're losing lives and people don't feel safe using the amenities that that they're that they've paid for. And and it's something has to has to shift. And so i- if yeah, if there's something I can do at the local level to, as I say, move the needle on that, I'm I'm willing to explore that.
And I'm I'm happy to join you on that. You know, I I'm working in that in that space during my day job dealing with the unhoused population on the levees, right? And a lot of you know, I worked with Assemblymember Cooper to deal with legislation, but you know, anyway, didn't pass the last two rounds. So I'm happy to, you know, provide whatever I've learned, but also I'm sure there'll be more to learn as well and do whatever whatever we can. I, you know, only because you mentioned some victims that I also want to mention because it was a former colleague of mine's sister, the the woman in Lamb Park that also was fallen under another same type of situation. So it's, you know, and this most recent one, obviously, they're all tragic, but I think what struck you and struck all of us is how, I mean, it was right here. This one was in Elk Grove and and this things don't happen here. So let's do what we can to make sure it doesn't happen again.
It's and be proactive. And so I mean, I would guess, you know, for council direction to see have both of you lead a task force. And then just like other task forces in the in the past, it's an ad hoc committee. And you invite who you feel that you need to and keep us updated because at the end of the day, we all we all want to help. And we know that we can't fix all of the the issues you ask all of us and we'll all come up with different ideas of how to address homelessness, but always, you know, keep some of these, you know, some of them are suffering and and doing it with a compassionate lens. But we definitely need to be proactive because those emails and those phone calls and text messages have increased over the last six months. And while we may think we have limitations, there are things that we can be doing as well. But from all again, also, until we know not only the exact number of folks that we're dealing with, but getting an idea of what the needs are, then all of us can be the best ambassadors and and advocate for those that increased funding that we may need to address some of this. So without knowing what the solution is, I'm, you know, let's see what the information yields and I think that it's a tremendous opportunity for us to be ahead of this. And I would suggest bringing somebody in from the county, of course, from Supervisor Natoli's office, maybe Supervisor Natoli to be part of those conversations. Because what we don't want to do is work in silos. Because part of the problem is is that the different agencies aren't necessarily speaking to one another. And you get different strategies on how to address things and let's try to bring this together and and through a synergistic relationship. So they're not, one, we're not necessarily duplicating efforts, but not doing things independent of one another. This really, we need to be working on collaboratively. Councilmember when?
So real quick, I don't want to take up much more time on this. Thank you, Councilmember Hume for bringing that up. And I don't need to be on any more task force, but social services and all the things that you are all talking about is kind of what I do every single day, eat, leave, breathe. It's what I have for breakfast every morning. So I feel like if you need assistance as far as information, guidance, I can certainly share that with you. I also serve on the homeless council for the county and represent our city as well, too. And so I'd be more than happy to share some information updates on where we're at. But yep, I'm, you know, can't have more than three, but I'd be more than happy to just share some information with you so that you're up to date on what we've been discussing as as a county and and it's a there's a lot of entities that are a part of this. It's not just what we're talking about, but there's a whole lot of us that are all a part of this conversation and around just organizations and services who can jump in and do this and work with this community and how do we do this and who's the experts on all of this and whatnot. And so I I won't be a part of the discussion. I see Mr. Hogg's hands up.
I'm happy to refer to you, though.
Mayor, council, vice mayor, if I can chime in for just a moment. The initial ask from Councilmember Hume was to bring this back and have a discussion about what to do. And we've had a lot of good discussion along those lines. So a couple of thoughts. One thing, if you want to task Councilmember Hume to look into this, we'll certainly work with him to do that. If you'd like it to be a larger effort, we can bring that back and get some council direction, a little clarity and perhaps allocation of resources as to what exactly you want to do. So those are kind of two options you could consider. If you just want us to work with Councilmember Hume, we certainly we can do that. But if you want something a little broader, then we'd like to bring it back and get some direction from the full council after we've given you a briefing on that.
Yeah, I mean, I think from my perspective, it's more than just Councilmember Hume. It's it's the vice mayor also involved and and having a larger discussion because I imagine it's, you know, I think originally Councilmember Hume's suggested one or two staff members. But to be a lot more expansive on the information and research and coming back with with solutions. I think it's a great opportunity to begin to be ahead of this and not think in terms of my district, this district, this is what I love about our council is we look at things through the lens of the city. And I know that that's unique to our city. And so what, you know, as we are advocating and articulating the best interest of the city of Elk Grove, not just how it's impacting one district over another. Because that's where we fail to act and and finding some solution. So I I think, I mean, do you have enough direction? I think with Councilmember Hume, it's a little bit more expanded than what you mentioned initially, but I think that I think having your perspectives in addition to staff and perhaps some other experts is 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 meaningful.
So so with the permission of the council and Councilmember Hume is the council member who brought this up, let me just offer this suggestion. We'll we'll bring it back for a larger discussion. There's a lot of issues that need to be resolved and you've all made made great points about that, particularly of the tragic incident that Councilmember Hume brought up. And and we can bring that back. I don't know if it'll happen at the next meeting, but we can have staff work this up and bring it back for a larger discussion and maybe some more clear direction after you've gotten some feedback from staff as to as to the resources available, what we can do for the council and the community.
That that would be great. Does that sound good, Councilmember Hume? Does that meet some of what the initial? Okay, great. And I would, you know, as we go through this process, definitely I would reach out to obviously Hart and Marie Giacchino because she there are unhomed folks that regularly try to break into the food bank. And she's trying to be on the forefront to be helpful and supportive so that she has a lot of great information that she she could share as well.
All right. I think we got it.
All right. Um, I don't remember where we left off. Has everyone given a committee report or an update? Vice Mayor is I don't remember where we left off.
That was a, thank you, Councilmember Hume for for bringing that up. I my first of all, I have a very, very short report, but it's gonna sound so wonky and boring compared to what you just said.
The New Year's speakers.
Yeah, well, but I I think many of you will 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 recall just as as part of SACOG, we're beginning the, again, the the update to the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, the Sustainable Community Strategies, which is a, you know, document we update every four years. But this time they're renaming it the blueprint, the 2024 blueprint. And I only bring that up because there's a history of many may not realize around the the concept of the of the blueprint, which, you know, I think it was, I think, as well intended, but I think for this, for our city in particular, and there was and others in suburban communities throughout this region, I think there was a lot of consternation.
You're on mute. Oh.
Yeah, sorry. There's a lot of, there was, there was a lot of consternation around it. And so I would just wanted to bring that to to people's attention. If you see 2024 blueprint, please know it is not the blueprint of old. It is, it is a 2024 blueprint and is intended to be around transportation, economic development, as well as any of the statutory requirements that that it goes in, goes along with that. So I know it's a little convoluted, but I I'm happy to go into more detail with anyone if they want to hear more. Thanks.
Did I leave anyone else out or is it my turn? I think it's my turn. We went through everyone. All right. Now, no reports, a Councilmember Hume covered for Regional SAN. But last week, the vice mayor joined me along with many city staff, including our city manager, our economic development director, Public Works, Jeff Warner. We hosted Congresswoman Doris Matsui. With the redistricting process, we will be post-election getting a new congressional representative, even though Congressman Ami Bear, of course, lives here and has been a great advocate for our city. But it was important for me to invite her to our city and get her reacquainted. She's familiar with Elk Grove, but not, you know, obviously she hasn't represented our city, but we had her wonderful things to showcase. And so we took her on a bus tour around town. And it was great showcasing all of the great successes of our city, the the future projects, some of our, you know, infrastructure needs in the future. And and feel free, Vice Mayor Sun, to also chime in on that visit. But it was a great opportunity for her to see and learn, and she was so impressed with the city of Elk Grove and our staff. We took her to Elk Grove PD and showed her all of our amazing technology at our, the Arctic Center. And, you know, it it was tremendous. And for her to see that up close and personal, she was engaging, she asked a little great follow-up questions. And she was certainly impressed. And we of course, you know, District 56 spoke for itself and went out to the Casino Project and Kubota and what what might and hopefully may one day be the the zoo site. And Old Town, we started off in Old Town and culminated with a lunch. So I just wanted you all to know that we had a great visit with her. Vice Mayor Sun, if you want to offer any, you know, personal insights, it was great to to have her here.
I think you articulated very well. I totally agree with you. All the thing I'll add is that she'll she'll be back, right? She wanted to see that she didn't get a chance to, you know, that the rural community, you know, she's really really excited about, you know, this this rural suburban urban interface. And so she sees herself as that that representative that can, you know, transition between all three. So she'll be touring our neighborhoods as well.
Right. So just wanted to share that as well. So I have nothing else. Anybody else have anything else? We're all good. All right. Then with that, I will adjourn the meeting at 9:45. Have a great night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night. Thank you.